All right. Good morning. Welcome, everybody. It is Tuesday, April 19th. It is 9:03. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We're going to ask folks who are with us if you're both willing and able to stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by Pastor Ken Squares, Squires, Bethel Life Center. Pastor, thank you for being here.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. City employees, thank you for your service to our city. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this past weekend and the reminder worldwide of the resurrection of Jesus Christ. And Father, for those who put their atoning faith in Christ, Lord eternal life, life beyond life. We pray, Father, for the city of Wichita, God. We pray, Lord, for its safety, God. We pray for its safety against violence and racism against those who would want to do harm. We pray for its growth, Father, God, in the areas, Father, of infrastructure, in the area of business, God. We pray protection over families, Father, God, and pray your blessing in our schools, in our hospitals, Father, God, and Lord, in our fire and police department. Put a blessing today upon these who deliberate and serve and make strategic decisions on behalf of the city of Wichita in Jesus' name. And everyone said, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance, this flag, the United States of America, and to the republic, says, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice. All right, Madam Clerk.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on April 12th, 2022.
So every member had a chance to review the minutes, and if so, is there any discussion on the minutes? If there's no discussion on the minutes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Click, roll, enroll. Members cast the vote. Ever received 78 votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Proclamations Arbor Day.
If you're here to receive the proclamation Arbor Day, please make your way to the front. Proclamation of the city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas, the city of Wichita encourages environmental stewardship in the creation of a more sustainable community through the increase in urban canopy. And whereas, the global pandemic has increased our understanding that investment in trees and outdoor spaces are vital to the physical and mental health of the community. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic validity of business districts, and beautify our community. And whereas, the city of Wichita recognizes the legacy of planting trees as generational, generational in scope and daily in benefit. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the city of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 28th, 2022, as Arbor Day. And the city of Wichita, Kansas, and encourage all Wichitaans to attend the city of Wichita Arbor Day celebration at the Peachtree Park at 10:00 a.m. on Friday, April 29th, and be a part of the legacy of Arbor Day by planting a tree in your own property.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm manager, and also park leadership. Through your support over the years and dedication to the urban forest, the city of Wichita has been named a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation for 36 consecutive years. Wichita is a perennial leader in community tree planting. In 2020, the city of Wichita planted 1,458 trees, and the Kansas community that had the next highest tree planting total planted 600 fewer trees than the city of Wichita. Please join us on Arbor Day, Friday, April 29th, at 10:00 a.m., Peachtree Park at 55th Street South and South Hydraulic to celebrate trees, to celebrate tree planting, and learn how you can improve and influence the tree canopy of Wichita. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Arkansas River Trash Cleanup Day.
If you're here to receive the proclamation for the Arkansas River Trash Cleanup, please make your way towards the front. Also, if you're taking pictures, you can just make your way forward. There's, I want to make sure you get the good picture, so you're good. All right. It's a proclamation of the city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas, a celebration of National Earth Day can take many forms. The city of Wichita's premier environmental event takes place along the Arkansas River with dedicated and passionate volunteers from across Central County. And whereas, the Arkansas River Trash Cleanup is a 19-year tradition to clean up Wichita's greatest natural water resource. And whereas, the 2022 Arkansas River Trash Cleanup will increase water quality, protect the animals that call the river home, enhance Wichita's image, and safeguard all communities downstream from Derby to the Gulf of Mexico. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the city of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim May 7th, 2022, as Arkansas River Trash Cleanup Day. And the city of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to celebrate Earth Day by participating in the Arkansas River Trash Cleanup to help make our city a beautiful place to live, work, and play.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council and City Manager. We're excited to have the 19th Annual River Trash Cleanup. I will be honest, when I worked for the city of Wichita 19 years ago, it was run out of the back of my little red pickup with a box of Krispy Kremes and whoever showed up to help pick up trash. Today, it's grown to an event that attracts nearly 1,000 people, and we have sponsors from Cargill, Spirit, Merit Trust, InTrust, and so many others that make this event what it can be today. So please come out and join us on Saturday, May 7th, at 151 North Waco. We'll have a party along the river and some great hamburgers afterwards. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk.
National Infertility Awareness Week.
If you're here to accept the proclamation for National Infertility Awareness Week, please make your way to the front. Proclamation of the city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas, according to the CDC, 1 in 8 couples have trouble getting pregnant or sustaining a pregnancy. And whereas, the World Health Organization and American medicalization has defined infertility as a disease. And whereas, infertility affects women and men equally and does not discriminate based on race, religion, sexual orientation, marital status, or social economic level. And whereas, all people challenged in their family building journey should have access to all family building options. Family building options include adoption and medical treatment such as vitro fertilization and third-party reproduction. And whereas, raising awareness of infertility and the barriers faced by the family building community is the first step to removing these barriers. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the city of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim April 24th through the 30th, 2020, as National Infertility Awareness Week.
Hi, I'm Jessica, and I'm here just to kind of share my story a little bit. I'll just give a quick synopsis because that's part of National Infertility Week, is sharing your story. And me and my husband have been trying since we got married in 2017. We didn't have any idea that we would have any issues with fertility. And so it wasn't until a friend mentioned it to me of getting checked out. And so in 2020, we did tests and all of that and found out that we do have a diagnosis of infertility between the two of us. And we've been going through treatments ever since. And if you're aware, Kansas actually does not offer any coverage for infertility, so everything is out of pocket to build our family. And then this is Kim Harbor. I met her through a support group for Resolve, which is a national nonprofit infertility group, and I'll let her share her story, too.
Yeah, so Jessica and I just met actually today. We've participated in a virtual support group that I lead for the state of Kansas for infertility, and that's through Resolve, which is a national infertility organization, as she said. And my husband and I have been married almost three years, and we've been trying to have a child since then, and it's been a long time. Gosh, always good. It's been a dream to have a child. And we have not had any luck. But there's good news. We, I advocated for better insurance coverage, so we tried. Oh, thank you. That helps. Kleenex has stopped the tears, so that's good. So anyway, I've been trying for three years. We've tried IUI. We've tried, which is artificial insemination. We have tried. Just, you can name it everything. And we'll be doing IVF soon, so we're excited. But I did advocate for better insurance coverage through my employer, and so now I have IVF coverage. And that includes medication coverage as well. And IVF can cost about $20,000 to $25,000, depending on the diagnosis. And we have, I have diminished a varying reserve, so that just means I have not as many eggs. So we just wanted to share our stories today to share that infertility different is different per person. But definitely, in your place of employment, if you can help advocate for insurance to cover people that have infertility, since it is a disease, that is so helpful as it does affect 1 in 8 couples, as the mayor said. So we just appreciate y'all being here today, learning more about infertility, and checking out Resolve. And just know that it's an emotional roller coaster, so be kind to those that are struggling to build their family. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Public agenda's next, Mayor. Deidra Thompson, issues with the Wichita Animal Shelter.
All right, Ms. Thompson, are you here? If so, please make your way to the front. If not, we'll go to the next person. Madam Clerk.
Michael McCorkle, Earth Day 2022, in the shadow of climate change.
Welcome, sir.
Good morning. My name is Michael McCorkle. I'm born and raised here in Wichita, Kansas. I currently live in District 5. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. More than 50 years ago, out of concern for the future, Earth Day was established. Since then, too many leaders have ignored warnings about the consequences of burning fossil fuels. And now our continued existence on Earth is in danger like never before. The latest United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change report is nightmarish, how it portrays the likely future for our children and their children if nothing is done. But I have good news for all of you. Climate scientists believe that as bad as things are, after decades of leaders prioritizing fossil fuel profits over people and planet, we still have a chance for a future if we work together to save it. Last year, a group of concerned Wichitaans argued that this city council should establish a sustainability board. After seven months, 27 different public inputs from professors to high school students and a 7-0 city council vote, the Wichita Sustainability Integration Board was established. I'm proud to be a member of this new board, and through this board, I hope to raise public awareness about climate change because people everywhere need to be informed. The future is in danger. The IPCC report details the sobering gap between where global society is heading and where we need to go to survive as a species on Earth. As the report explains, emissions from current and planned fossil energy infrastructure are already more than twice the amount that would push the planet over 1.5 degrees of global heating, a level of global heating that will bring much more intense heat, fire, storms, flooding, and drought than the present 1.2 degrees. By the way, we are currently on track for 3.4 degrees by 2030 if nothing changes. For too long, elected leaders at all levels have allowed business leaders and developers to profit at the expense of taxpayers and our shared planet. In many cities like Wichita around the country, communities of Americans are hostage to the choices that city managers make. City managers who are not elected who prioritize profit for developers over quality of life for all citizens. It is no surprise that, quote, "A survey by the city manager's office of tree protections in 11 other cities put Wichita near the bottom of the list," unquote. The Eagle article went on to, quote, "City manager latent favoring developers in the discussion of tree replacement across Wichita, which has lost thousands of trees in recent years." Wichita is also ranked 99th among the 100 largest U.S. cities in energy transition because of leadership that favors profits for the oil industry and developers over people and planet. The single most important decision the Wichita City Council could make to benefit future generations of Wichitaans is to replace the city manager with someone who prioritizes people and planet over profit for developers. On this Tuesday before Earth Day 2022, I feel terrified for our children and grandchildren and for humanity in general. I feel deep grief over the loss of forests and corals and diminishing biodiversity. But mostly, I feel deep disappointment with past elected leaders. Climate change should be an election issue from now on because it affects everything. When you look at your children and think about their future, remember that no matter how bad it gets, it can and will continue to get worse until we end the fossil fuel industry and the quest for ever more profit at the expense of everything else. What actually happens depends on choices in councils like this around the world. Thank you for the opportunity to address this, Councilor.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Ken Thomas, facilities required for working dogs.
Hello, my name is Ken. Ken Thomas. I live in District 6 and work in District 6. How you doing? What, of course, we have the old Cudahy Building. It's a huge place. It's 300,000 square foot facility. We've been broken into, it's like a weekly basis. They cut the fence, they go in. A lot of times, we catch them, we walk them out. If the cops get there early enough, we have like a 30-minute delay there, sometimes an hour and a half. But what we've been looking at, of course, is these Dobermans and German Shepherds, working dogs. We're going to bring them in and help us with this problem. These working dogs, these are these VA1 dogs. They're highly trained dogs, very expensive dogs. And we're also looking to put these halo collars on them so we know exactly where they're at and do a virtual fence area. Plus, we've got a six-foot fence around the place. What we had was, a couple weeks ago, I had Courtney from MAPC come out and say, hey, you put them inside there, guess what? You need electric, lights, and toilet. Okay, I'm wondering. I said, well, first thing is, these dogs don't know how to run a toilet. I've never seen a dog yet that's trained, like, could train to use a toilet. And lights, I'm going, we're only going to put these dogs where we have natural lights, where we work at. Where we fix, we work at because we want to leave them there. They're trained, and somebody comes in, they're going to bark and growl and say, don't come in. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to keep this place secure from people and for us to work because nothing, you know, when you're a small business, nothing makes you more upset when you fix something and next day you see somebody just turn it up. You know, that's just how it is. But it makes, it's like taking a dance and we're going backwards. And what we're doing is, is we're trying to work through the applications and everything. But what we want to do is, is, is y'all be aware that, don't, to me, it's idiotic to have, to tell me I have to have lights and a toilet for my working dogs when we don't have to have one when we work inside. And that's what I thought was interesting, and I appreciate y'all's time. And, and, and I'll thank you again, sir.
Thank you for joining us. Madam Clerk.
Sybil Strum, stop the violence, start the caring.
Good morning, City Council.
Morning.
Mayor Whipple, Vice Mayor Tuttle, Brandon, City Brand, well, all of you. Good morning. I came into the City Hall when we had that one meeting, and I was denied clearance to show my sign. I was told it was a demonstration sign. It is not. It's a message. Do you know that the wor, oh, I'm sorry. I live at 326 North Walnut, Delano area. Okay. My sign was a message because the world is just going haywire. And it's like this. And I wanted to give it to you people as a message, but I was denied clearance. The police officer told me you could not bring that sign in, and I asked their why. She said, because it is too big. It's a protest sign, and it wasn't. It is called Stop the Violence, Start the Caring, Life is More Important Than Dying. Because we need to do that. I wrote one. It's on Walnut Street, 326 North Walnut, and it was in 1994, and we were marching against gangs. And all of a sudden, it became worldwide. A person from South Korea wanted to pose with me with it. And the elderly man had a U.S. Army jacket on. And he goes, can I pose with you? I said, yeah. And then I had the African diplomat come and want to pose with me. And then the African-American museum wanted to pose with me. They said, we want that sign, so I made them one. And then I found out that the African-American museum took one to Rosa Parks Elementary. Does that look like it's a protest sign? Am I putting down the police? No. I am for the law enforcement, but I do not like people profiling people. I am for the law enforcement, but I do not like people profiling people, and I will stand up for the people. And I just didn't understand why that lady did that. That police officer, she has brownish-blond hair, she told me, go take your sign and tear it up, throw it in the trash. That's not right. I have the right to speak. That's the First Amendment. So I would like to give this to you all. If I can, I'll make another one. Could I?
Go ahead and answer the clerk if you like.
Because that's what's going on in the world. We need to stop the violence. It's going on in Ukraine. It's going on in Africa. It's going on here in Wichita, Kansas. I have seen the news, people have shot people. People have, like in New York, a guy got out of hand and shot up the subway. We need to stop this. We need to go do this as soon as we can because it's just terrible, even though I don't know the people in the news, I feel bad for their families. That's why I made that, but the lady went and told me to tear it up, and I didn't want to. It was a big poster, it was eleven by fourteen, but I gave you one little. Please, let's stop the violence, start caring. Life is more important than dying. I wrote that, Sybil Strum, and also God gave me and Jesus the urge to do this, so thank you for listening, and thank you whoever came to my, helped me do this. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Bill Stow, safety concerns at Eisenhower National Airport.
Most of you know me. Some of you are probably not excited to see me. Uh, I live in District Five. I have a couple of things I want to talk about, and I'm going to go as quickly as I can, I promise. But first, I'd like to, uh, express a quote from Friday that really concerned me. Transparency needs to make sense. That may be the single most terrifying sentence I've ever heard from an elected official, just the implication alone, but that's not why I'm here. On April the sixth, I sent all of you an email, including the city manager and the police department. Thank you, Mr. Frye, for your response. The Kansas Attorney General released a statement in December declaring that THC Delta Eight is illegal in the state of Kansas. However, as of this morning, we still have numerous businesses in the city advertising the sale of said product. I've been in contact with numerous police officers. One officer even told me in confidence that he has been told to, quote, "Leave these people alone." That's horrifying. What other laws are we not going to enforce? Regardless of your feelings on the sale and distribution of THC, the law is, the substance is illegal. Who benefits? That's my question. And having been in law enforcement, I assure you, someone benefits. Now, the other reason I'm here and the main reason, on the fourteenth, on the thirteenth of this month, I sent all of you, including the manager, an email to Mr. Frye, Mr. Bluebaugh, and Vice Mayor Tuttle. Thank you for your responses. I fly in and out of the city of Wichita at least once a week, in fact, very recently. Uh, I've been to more airports in the United States than I care to try to name, and most of them have done an exceptional job of providing a area for rideshare passengers, but Wichita has not. In fact, it's probably the worst I've seen. On Tuesday, April the twelfth, I got back into Wichita just before midnight. Not a single employee was anywhere to be found in the airport or on the property. Everything was shut down. Nearly every light was turned off except at baggage claim. There was one female police officer, airport officer there. She was at the opposite end of the concourse in the dark, having an argument on a cell phone. After waiting for baggage claim, myself and five other passengers who I'd never met in my life made our way to Rideshare. If you're not familiar with that location, it's across the street from the terminal, at the far end of the parking garage, in a parking lot with absolutely no cover from the weather. There is something they call a shelter. It's a small structure about the size of a phone booth with three walls that leaks like a sieve and has a vending machine to buy parking tickets. Not adequate. Soon after we got there, a thunderstorm commenced. It was hailing. We all huddled together in the phone booth and held our luggage up to protect ourselves from the hail. There were no Ubers or Lyft available, and ironically, no cabs, which is why the Uber stand is where it is. So I called the airport the following morning, and I was told that, uh, we should have waited inside or should have parked in the parking garage. Last time I did that, there was a thousand dollars in damage to my car, and the airport assumes no liability. Then she told me, well, we could have gone back in during the storm. Yeah, that makes sense. Let's run through the hail dragging our luggage. Well, the short version is, two people that were there with me were from out of town, and it was the first time they'd been in Wichita, they told me so. Imagine the first impression our city made on them. Would you want to return? I wouldn't. I waited over an hour for a car. It didn't make me feel very good, so did they, and I shared it with them. I, I guess the, what I'm trying to say is, I just feel like we can do better. There has to be a way that we can put our best foot forward and invite people to our city instead of making them feel unwelcome, because that's what we're doing at the airport right now. When we close the entire facility and roll the streets up because it's after ten P.M. and there's no one to help you in any way, and you can't even get a car, and you've got to stand out in a hailstorm, that's, that's just not good. There's no other word for it. And for those of us who fly in and out of the airport and keep the airport running with the amount of tickets we buy, I assure you, we have other options. I can drive to Kansas City and save a lot of money, and their parking lot is secured and has cameras. My time is short, I had more, but I, 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 all, all I'm saying is, let's at least make an attempt to provide a safe and welcoming environment for those who want to visit our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Did Ms. Thompson make her way in? Thompson was first on the list. If not, then we'll go on to the next item. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items one through thirteen.
Does every member have a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there any discussion? Chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to pull items six and nine.
Six and, what was the second one?
Nine.
Six and nine. Further discussion on consent agenda? If there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, uh, with the exception of items six and nine, which would be immediately discussed following consent agenda item. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Have a received six yay votes.
Councilmember Holt, thank you.
Have a received seven yay votes. That motion does pass. Back on to items six and nine. If there's no objection, we could take those items likely together. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Due to a personal conflict, I need to abstain from items six and item nine.
Other, I could show that Councilmember Johnson abstained from items six and nine. If there's no further discussion on items six and nine, then I'll make a motion to accept both items six and nine. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Have a received six yay votes to one abstention, Councilmember Johnson being the abstention, uh, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Board of bids and contracts dated April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Morning.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Melinda Walker, purchasing manager. I'd like to introduce Josh Lauber. He is our new procurement team member, he's a senior buyer, and he's going to present board of bids.
Morning, Mayor and City Council. Josh Lauber, Department of Finance. The first item for today from engineering is Swanson Park Bridge replacement. The recommendation is defer to May second, twenty twenty-two. Second item is traffic signal and paving improvements to Twenty-first and Broadmoor at Rock and Rock Hill. Uh, the recommendation is to award Prado Construction LLC in the amount of five-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars, subject to your approval, May tenth, twenty twenty-two, for a new engineer's estimate and project budget authorization, excuse me. Um, McLean from Central to Thirteenth Street North, the recommendation is to award Pearson Construction LLC in the amount of six-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars, um, subject to your approval of May tenth, twenty twenty-two, for a new engineer's estimate and budget authorization. For purchasing, we have liquid polyelectrolyte bulk delivery. Uh, the recommendation is to redirect the ward to Polydyne Incorporated in the amount of forty-eight-thousand-six-hundred dollars. Uh, laptops and hardware, the recommendation is to defer to April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, McLean Carpet Tiles and Cove Base, the recommendation is to award Harry Street Carpet LLC in the amount of ninety-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and two cents. Uh, this is how to become a vendor at the city of Wichita. These are our current open requests for proposals, and the recommendation is to approve the bid awards as recommended.
Is there a discussion on this item? Or is there questions for staff? Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? Seeing none, if there's no further discussion, I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Have a received seven yay votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Public hearing and request of, for letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds Air Capital Flight Line LLC.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Tim Goodpast, here with the city's Office of Economic Development for the record. The item before you today is a request for a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for Air Capital Flight Line LLC. On April twelfth of twenty twenty-two, the city council approved speculative, uh, maintenance, repair, and overhaul language for an MRO program as part of its economic development guidelines. The requirements require a developer to build a minimum of fifty-thousand square feet with seventy-five-thousand square feet preferred, a minimum of forty-five-feet clear height with sixty-five to seventy-five, or sixty-five to seventy-foot, uh, clear height, uh, preferred for wide-body jets, and the project could be developed on a private runway, a military runway, or a public runway. Uh, similar to the industrial, uh, speculative program, the project must be started within a hundred and twenty days of city council approval and completed within fifteen months of city council approval, with some exceptions for FAA approval and supply chain disruptions that we're seeing in the market today. The developer must use industrial revenue bonds to achieve a ninety-five percent abatement in the first five years and a fifty percent abatement in the second five years. Air Capital Flight Line is made up of Dave Murfin and Johnny Stevens. Uh, Air Capital Flight Line has built one seventy-five-thousand-square-foot maintenance, repair, and overhaul facility that is currently leased to the Kansas Modification Center, which is a partnership between the National Institute for Aviation Research and Sequoia Aircraft Conversions, which is converting Boeing Triple Sevens from passenger aircraft to cargo aircraft. At the time they built that facility, there was no incentive program available for MROs. Uh, Air Capital Flight Line intends to build a speculative MRO facility that would be seventy-five-thousand square feet with seventy-five-foot clear height at an approximate cost of ten million dollars. This aerial is an aerial of Air Capital Flight Line, which is north of Forty-seventh Street South and on the east side of Oliver. Uh, in this aerial, Forty-seventh Street South is at the very south end of this aerial running from left to right. Oliver is on the left side, running from top to bottom. The area outlined in yellow is where the first seventy-five-thousand-square-foot center that was built, that is leased to Kansas Modification Center, was built, and the second, uh, outline on the southern part of that area outlined in yellow is where the new speculative building would be built. These are photos of the seventy-five-thousand-square-foot facility that is leased by Kansas Modification Center, that is a Boeing Triple Seven, uh, that is in the facility, just to give you some idea of the scale of the facility. That is another one from inside the facility. The estimated value of one year of a ninety-five percent tax abatement based on a ten-million-dollar capital investment is approximately three-hundred-and-seven-thousand, with the city's share being approximately seventy-eight thousand. A cost-benefit analysis was conducted by the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State University, which showed an overall ratio of benefits to cost for the city of one-point-three-six to one and one-point-one-five to one for the city's general fund. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the city council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures. Charlie Stevens, who is here on behalf of Air Capital Flight Line, can answer any questions specific to the development. Andrew Nave with the Greater Wichita Partnership is also here that is working with a number of MRO prospects in Wichita, and that organization is headed to the MRO Americas Trade Show next week in Dallas, and if this project is approved, they will be promoting this project at that trade show. I would be happy to answer any questions as well.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Holt.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have two quick questions for you and then a couple for, um, Air Capital Flight Line. One, and this is more of a technical question, um, does the property tax value that is fixed, does that fluctuate with inflation, or is it just fixed for the entire, um, duration of the IRB?
So it is fixed at a ninety-five percent abatement for the first five years and fifty percent of the second five years. The property valuation actually will fluctuate, so the appraiser, the Cedric County Appraiser that handles all the appraisers for property, may adjust the value of the property. It will still have a ninety-five percent abatement for the first five years and a fifty percent abatement for the second five years. So if that valuation does go up during that property tax abatement period, then, uh, all of the taxing jurisdictions would receive an increased value because we are not abating one-hundred percent, and, and it's also probably worth noting that we do not abate the land value, so whatever happens with the land value, uh, also could adjust what the taxing jurisdictions receive in terms of a property tax during that ten-year abatement.
Okay. Uh, minus the improvements that we make, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, the second one is right here on our green sheet, it says, going forward, investment in such large buildings without committed tenants poses substantially more risk, especially giving, given the challenging construction market. Could you elaborate on that just a little bit?
Sure. So, um, I'll use an example of, uh, also at Air Capital Flight Line. Uh, last year in early July, the city council approved, uh, an expansion of a facility that was built a few years ago for Spirit Aero Systems on the Air Capital Flight Line campus. Uh, so they had built a hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet, I don't know, two or three years ago for, for Spirit, and were, uh, wanting to expand that facility for Spirit by fifty-thousand square feet. So this was done before the Fourth of July last year, and the developer, uh, same developer that's here today, obviously, uh, ordered the steel that week, um, once it was approved by the city council, and, and I had a conversation with them, uh, shortly thereafter, and they were just receiving that steel last month to expand that facility. So we have a very long lead time between, uh, approval of a project and when the project can actually be started, not just completed, but actually started. And, uh, in addition to the long lead time to get a project started, uh, there is substantial increase in cost for steel, uh, so these projects are seeing substantial increases in cost, and so there are real challenges, both in timing and in cost of getting these projects taken care of.
Okay. Um, and I guess that moves me into my next question is, if there's no delays, um, about how long would this, uh, project take in construction?
Sure. So if there were no delays, ideally, they would be complete with the project in the fifteen months that we require, which is what we established under our speculative industrial building program. So they would start within a hundred and twenty days of city council approval and complete the project within, uh, fifteen months of city council approval.
Okay, so, yeah, that fifteen months shouldn't be an issue as long as they have the supply.
Correct.
Okay, um, and there are prospective tenants out there for this project?
There are. In fact, uh, Greater Wichita Partnership is working with several prospects, some of them are international prospects, and what we're seeing from these prospects and hearing from these prospects is that the- is that the, uh, having the building available sooner than later is critical for them. That they're at points where they have made a business decision that they are moving forward. And so it's a question of where is there a location that they can move forward with their project?
Okay, and, and that ties into the final question here. Um, have they already began the process and, because there's a sixty-day window? Um, so sixty days previous to us approving this, um, we still, they're still eligible for the, um, IRBs to help cover the costs that they have already. Have they already incurred any costs with design or construction at this point?
Well, they, they would have been working on design, so they would have architectural work that they were working on. They, uh, could be doing some site prep work, uh, just to be prepared to move forward as, as quickly as possible once they are approved by the City Council, assuming they're approved by the City Council. Uh, but they, they would not have incurred any substantial, uh, uh, expenses in terms of ordering steel or product to build the facility.
Okay, um, I think we had somebody who was, uh, looking to maybe speak on the, on the point of, um, tenants that are ready to go.
Yep. We're not. Okay, are you asking a particular question?
Uh, just, I'm curious about tenants that are ready to go and fill this and, um, just that they're...
Just wanted to make sure. Councilman Hoheisel, Andrew Nave with the Greater Wichita Partnership, happy to augment the staff's answer on that. The answer is yes, there is interest, um, in this building. We know of at least two projects that have, uh, this potential building on their, their list of considerations. And I can also say that there was two projects over the last year definitively, Project Neighbor and Project Baker, uh, going by their, by their codenames or confidentiality, that eliminated our community, eliminated this particular property because the building wasn't ready. And Tim did a good job of highlighting the supply chain lag and that delay. That is critical for many of these aerospace companies. They are not developers, they are not builders. They don't have the time or the sophistication to go in and build, uh, large hangars themselves. They're scouring the country for hangars that they can op, they can go in and, and lease and operate in right away. So that's why it's critical that we have these buildings built as spec, because there is interest. But when we start to tell them and show them, well, we've got this gorgeous piece of property, this gorgeous site, give us fifteen or twenty-four months and we can have you there, they move on to somewhere else in the country. So it's critical that we have this ready to go, uh, and I'm confident there will be interest.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
No further questions.
All right, further questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public. Are there members from the public who'd like to speak to this item?
My name is Sybil Strum. I reside at three-twenty-sixth North Wall. Sorry, I was crying at that time. Why is it when a business wants something, they get it? Like, they get, they don't have to pay the property tax. We have to pay our property tax. I have a daughter that's under a foreclosure. And, and, and she's working at Spirit. But let's get back to the issue. Why isn't these businesses get by with not paying taxes? When they get that business, they should have to pay taxes too. Us homeowners are paying taxes. People in apartments are paying taxes. I paid two-thousand dollars for my ha, property tax. I had an appraiser come over. I also pay my bills. But every time he comes up to the podium, he wants taxpayers to pay for their wrong. These businesses need to step up to the plate. You want your business, go pay your taxes. Go pay for the safety of your employees. Go pay for the parking lots that are there. I'm tired of listening to this. I don't know if anybody else is. But I've talked to co, taxpayers. They say they're tired of it. They don't want to pay for businesses to get their way. Thank you. Goodbye.
Madam, uh, excuse me. Is there any further public input on the industrial revenue bonds for the Air Cap in, in particular? Seeing none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench as the further discussion of this item from the body. First, I just want to... Could someone, there we go. Okay. Is it cutting on and off? Like, maybe it's the wire. No? It's my ears? All right. I'm gonna be brief. I just want to say, I think this is an amazing project. Uh, for those who might not know what an MRO is, it's, to dumb it down to a point where I could understand it, someone had to tell me, uh, it was actually Scott. Um, it's pretty much the mine key for airplanes, right? Like, you're, when you have airplanes, they need maintenance, they need to be worked on, they need, uh, uh, oil changes, but I think it's more than just that. And Wichita, we are actually at a incredible position right now when it comes to, uh, growing this sector because not only do we have two airports that are actually u, under the, the, the city, uh, purview, but also, uh, we have an incredible talent force who, who knows how to work on these airplanes. And in addition to that, um, we're geographically located in the center of the United States, uh, which means that if we make this, these type of movements, we actually have the ability to really corner this market. Uh, you know, I, I said in the state of the city that luck is when opportunity and preparation meet. Uh, in order for us to be prepared for future opportunities, we need to make moves like this now so that when our economic development team, uh, goes out to these conferences, they can get a little lucky and bring back more businesses, and we'll be ready for those businesses. So with that, I'm not going to make the motion on this because it falls under District Three, so I'm gonna go ahead and pass the floor to, um, my good friend, Councilmember Hoheisel. Uh, but, Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I recommend that we close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Have received seventy-eight votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Public hearings considering an amendment to the Delano Stadium redevelopment plan and approval of a development agreement with Wichita Riverfront LP and EPC Real Estate Group LLC.
Good morning.
Morning, Mayor. Council Kathy Sexton, your interim assistant city manager. Um, it's my pleasure to come before you today with the progress on this project that started in twenty-nineteen, essentially, and was updated in December. And since December, we've been working diligently to move the ball down the court, so to speak. And, um, what we'd like to show you today, a lot of slides, but I'm not gonna read everything, but I do want to give you a little history. Essentially, today, we are talking about the two sites, um, in yellow on this map, on either side of McLean and, um, uh, between the river and the baseball stadium. So that is the, only the areas we're talking about today, not the red area that was, uh, for future consideration. So in, in twenty-nineteen, there was a schedule that was set, set forth for this project, three phases over quite a few years of development. And then in December of twenty-twenty-one, just a few months ago, uh, the update in the form of a memorandum of understanding was approved here by the council. And that was bringing EPC Real Estate into the public-private partnership that we have on this project and putting forth the notion that they would be working on, uh, retail and hotel and office space in this area and that they would move up the construction schedule to essentially work more on Phase One and Phase Two instead of doing them sequentially. And so that MOU talked about a hotel, a hundred-and-fifty rooms, an office building, a parking structure, and riverbank improvements, and said that they would attempt to get a state grant also. And then, um, what we have today here in April is an even faster timeline. We would actually be, uh, looking at those same elements, but a little more, a little bit bigger hotel than talked about in December. Little, uh, going ahead with two office buildings instead of one. And then the parking structure also is a little bigger because two office buildings instead of one. You, you need the parking spaces. So the riverbank improvements, we're pleased to say, last week, as you all know, the state did go ahead and approve a five-million-dollar grant to help with this project. And so all that is good news because all this project means that we'll be able to get stuff built faster and be, uh, having these buildings on the tax roll faster. So again, what we're bringing to you today is a development agreement as well as some, uh, other documents that need approved in public hearings to be held, uh, by statute. One thing that's in these documents for your approval is the TIF, uh, the Tax Increment Financing. Uh, it's now an eight-point-six-million-dollar number. When this was envisioned previous, it was at the five-million-dollar number. And so there's several things that have happened since then that puts that at a higher, um, amount. One of those things is changing it to pay-as-you-go financing. It's essentially restructuring the deal to where the city would no longer issue the bonds and take on the risk, rather the developer would take on that risk. And so that's a good thing for the city. It means a little higher amount, but also that amount is a little higher because why? Because we're building two office buildings instead of one, right? We're moving up construction timelines, so it only makes sense that it would be more of an investment upfront. I would remind you that part of the public interest in this is to provide parking for, um, other things to the public other than just the office and the hotel. So that is, uh, parking on the weekend evenings, excuse me, weekday evenings and on the weekends. So there's a lot, uh, there, but that is often when the city is, uh, involved in public parking garages. There's a public interest there. Now, the IRB is a new piece of this as well. And that is so that the developer can get this nine hu, about nine-hundred-thousand-dollar exemption on sales tax. That's the sales tax on the materials used in construction. And that is something commonly given, uh, in developments like thi, like this and many of the industrial developments you work on. And that, again, as you know, is needed to help deal with this faster construction time during what? During this period when construction costs are going out the roof. So it's, uh, helpful to add these additional pieces upfront. Of course, we'll be designing and working with, uh, the developer on the riverfront improvements. Those haven't been designed yet, but, uh, we will be engaging the fabulous Paul Gunsman to help us with project management, uh, assuming you all approve this today, so that he can help with the riverfront improvements. The, um, as far as milestones, the, I think I mentioned that, uh, the idea is to begin this project yet this year and, uh, be done in two years. So that's a, an aggressive schedule and one that, uh, I think this developer is uniquely able to, uh, make happen. The impact to the city, so we're gonna show you a slide here next that kind of shows you the idea of when you move construction timelines forward, um, you actually do get more revenue in faster. Um, and so that revenue is from taxes. That's from property taxes, which the TIF is all about, and from sales taxes, which the CID, Community Improvement District, and the Star Bond districts are all about, bringing in the sales and the property taxes. Those are estimated to be today twenty-three-point-eight million in net new revenue to the city coffers to help pay what? The stadium bonds. The whole purpose of this public-private partnership on office buildings and hotel is to, certainly, the overarching purpose is to improve the downtown core area, to prove the Delano neighborhood. But certainly, it's also to make sure we have a revenue source to pay for the stadium that we've already built. So this is my favorite slide and my last slide, and then I'll turn over a conversation to our next speaker. But this is the slide that tries to show benefit to the city. And it is an enhanced portion of, or version of what's on the second page of your staff report in the green sheet. And this just shows you in blue, I love the colors, right? Because this has been an ongoing project for several years. In twenty-nineteen, the yellow portion shows you in that yellow column, second from the right, that, uh, those were the numbers of eighteen-million-dollar tax benefit to the city, right? That would come from this project. Remember, that's when it was a slower project, lasting some years, six, six years or so. Now that, uh, in the blue from December, the project has been sped up, you can see in the blue, you were briefed in December, that that would go from eighteen to twenty million. So that's more, more benefit to the city. And now today, and I don't know, is this sort of orange color at the bottom? Today, with the faster implementation of this and the enhanced package, now we're looking at twenty-three million more. So even just from December, we're seeing more benefit to the public of two-point-three, two, excuse me, three-point-eight-million dollars that you see as better for the community in terms of taxing, uh, tax generating and therefore more monies to pay off the stadium. So that's a lot, but we have, uh, several more speakers. My pleasure to introduce Austin Bradley, Executive Vice President of, um, EPC Real Estate out of Overland Park. He is here as the par, the private partner involved. He's coming up to the podium now so that he can give you and the public a, a better sense of the overview of the project.
Good morning, Mayor and members of the council. Austin Bradley with EPC Real Estate Group. Uh, good to see you and appreciate the opportunity to present today. Um, I think a number of you have seen these slides, uh, in the past, maybe in December when we were last here presenting, uh, as part of that MOU, so I'll move quickly here, but wanted to provide a, a refresher. Kathy did a great job of outlining some of the more granular details as part of the deal, but I got some of the, the pretty pictures to share, which is always fun to do. Um, just from the outset here, obviously, I think we're all familiar with what's going on in Delano. It's gone through a renaissance, you know, fueled by various developments. We're, we're happy and proud to be a small part of that, but, um, obviously, the ballpark's a, a huge component of that. Uh, so we have this engine, we have many events per year. Uh, we have up to a half-million visitors per year, so there's work to do and there's, there's development that needs to be done to help, uh, serve those events, serve those visitors, and continue to elevate that area. That's something we've always talked about as part of this project is bringing forward program to continue to elevate the area, which I think fits within the city's vision for, for Delano. As Kathy referenced, over the last few months, the project has grown in size. I'll get into, uh, some of the programmatic details here in a second, but just at a high level, looking to the northwest, if you're hovering above the river, uh, the components as part of this phase are, are colored, you know, in red, yellow, and blue. Uh, starting in the left-hand side, this would be the office and retail component with the public parking garage. You have At Grade Retail, you have Office Above, and you have the Garage off to the left. Uh, then you have the building in yellow, which is essentially in right field, uh, essentially connected with the existing team offices, uh, and the museum. This is a new component. It's about thirty-thousand feet. So together, uh, between the red building and the yellow building, that's essentially doubled, almost doubled in size since we talked in, in December as part of that MOU. Uh, the Garage has increased eighty-three stalls, as Kathy referenced. Additional square footage to meet, you know, demand for those office patrons is really what's driving the increase in size for the parking garage. And then to round out this phase in blue, uh, we have a full-service, hundred-and-sixty-key hotel. When we spoke in, in December, it was a hundred-and-fifty keys. I'll go through exactly what made that possible here in a minute. But again, we have an operator ready to go, uh, full service, new to market, and so we're really excited about that component. Similar slide, but in a site plan fashion, you have some more detailed programmatic info on the top left. Uh, just oriented to the slide, you have Maple running left to right on the bottom side, and then you have McLean on the center, running vertically. Again, the office, retail, and garage component in red, that's about eighty-one-thousand square feet. Uh, and I'll round here just in generic numbers. Uh, the building in yellow, which against the new building, is about thirty-one-thousand square feet, and the hotel in blue at a hundred-and-sixty keys. Kathy mentioned the, uh, the state grant that we were fortunate to receive last week, five-million dollars. Uh, that five-million dollars will go specifically towards what's in green on this slide. So between McLean Boulevard and the river, with the exception of, take the footprint of the building out, that's essentially what this will pay for, all public horizontal improvements, uh, riverfront improvements. You know, we'll be working closely in a collaborative fashion with the city to design these. Carry what's been started, River Vista to the north, carry that south, promote connectivity, walkability, energize the riverfront. That's the intent of these funds. Few renderings here, uh, also at McLean and, uh, in Maple, looking to the northwest. This would be the office building, which was in red before, At Grade Retail to activate the Boulevard. You got Office as you go vertical, and off to the left, the Garage. Going on the other side, if you're on right field, essentially the foul pole, looking back to the southeast, you have the existing seating bowl and concourse, which would remain as it is today. You can see the new building, uh, beyond, which would be in red, uh, on the prior slide, and then the, the yellow building on the prior slide off to the left. Uh, you'll have some pretty fantastic views from the various spaces, common patios for the office patrons to enjoy the game day experience. And coming down to McLean, again, as I mentioned before, our intent with this development is to really activate and, and energize McLean Boulevard. Can be shut down on, on event days, really promote walkability. You have the hotel on the right-hand side, uh, and then you have the office and retail to the left. Also, as part of that, uh, state grant, uh, that'll go to pay for the skybridge that connects the hotel to the future office building, which we added over the last few months. What that does is allows us to put some shared amenities in the building that was yellow on the prior slide, shared fitness, shared meeting space, some of those kind of things that the community can use. And that allows us to increase density as part of the hotel, going from a hundred-and-fifty keys to a hundred-and-sixty keys. So I think that's a, that's a win-win. Aesthetically, it also kind of frames that McLean Boulevard, bring it down to a pedestrian scale, which I think is really nice. And last, I'll end on this rendering. Uh, again, if you're hovering... Again, if you're hovering over the river, looking back to the west, you have the new hotel at the foreground on the left side, and the new ballpark, just to give you a sense of, of scale and how this all fits together. So before I hand it over to the next speaker, just want to say how excited we are to be part of this project. Assuming, you know, we get through today, we're, we're ready to move forward as fast as possible, commencing tomorrow. And as soon as this presentation wraps up, I'd be happy to stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, Mayor, Members of City Council. Mark Elder with the Office of Economic Development. So getting a little bit further into the project, one of the questions is the project gap. And, and with this, they've had several challenges in trying to put together the financing with this. One of those, obviously, we've stated repeatedly is the rising construction costs. They, they continue to go up, they continue to make it harder and harder to do these projects. In addition, there's also the parking garage, construction and maintenance, they provide a very low return on investment. And so generally speaking, TIF has been used throughout downtown for that exact purpose, to be able to provide a public parking, parking garage and make the projects feasible by providing that public infrastructure. But on top of all those, there's just the current lending environment is also caused the way the lending structure goes with the higher equity requirements and the rise in interest rates have all created challenges and required the, the use of tax increment financing being requested today. With this, the developer provided their return on investment separately, but as you can see from this, there's an average of about 5% return before the use of incentives, which is below what the, the market would expect. And with this package put together today, it's, it brings it back within what we would consider market range of an average of about 11% return for this development. And Kathy highlighted a lot of this, but we're going to talk about a little bit more of how this has improved from 2019. This project will actually exceed 50,000 square feet of retail space and satisfies both, the square footage is required for both Phase 1 and Phase 2 of what was required under 2019 agreement, and overall creates a greater density than was anticipated. But also accelerates that, the completion timelines of the project from what was going to be July 2026 to now July of 2024. So again, we, we get everything online sooner, provide those services sooner, we get those taxes sooner. This project was evaluated by the Downtown Development Incentives Evaluation Committee. That's comprised of neighborhood citizens as well as business representatives and city staff. And through that review, they did determine that the proposal meets the requirements that were established in the city council policy. And, and now we're going to talk a little bit more about the TIF project plan, which is another element of what this public hearing is today. A little bit of background, we covered this two weeks ago, but it's to give a feel for what we're looking at. So in 2017, the TIF redevelopment district was established, and at that time, the goal was to support the new stadium and surrounding development. In 2019, the, and city expanded the redevelopment district, the TIF district, to encompass more of Delano, and that was to enable the city to fund additional improvements in Delano and the Delano neighborhood, if there were additional TIF funds available for pay-as-you-go after we pay our debt service. But what happened was in 2017 is when we also adopted the project plan for the TIF, which that sets out the elements within of what we can, what we can pay for, how we're going to pay for it. And it also establishes the area. The area that was established under that project plan in 2017 was set to mirror the redevelopment district of 2017, and it's never updated to reflect the expanded boundaries of 2019. Therefore, any improvements you wanted to use TIF funds for could not be used without making this adjustment that we're talking about today. Within the project plan, there's also an adjustment in the use of tax increment financing. So this, this eligible cost budget has been increased. Now, what that means is this is just identifying costs that can be paid for with TIF. It is not requiring the city to spend that money, but it does make it eligible to use TIF funds for that. The original project plan, I believe, had about $29 million in eligible costs, and this one today is 40 million. Again, the project plan also establishes the amount that can be bond, but this is not requiring you to spend it, but it allows you to use that if there are funds available to do so. And bringing back up the map, which is what I spoke about earlier, the 2017 project plan, I may be able to see this, followed Seneca and then kind of went down Doug, or followed Sycamore, and then went a little bit down Douglas, like both sides of the street, and that's where the project plan is today. What we're requesting this amended project plan is to mirror what the redevelopment district was and allow those eligible costs that were covered in the previous plan to be used anywhere within this area. And so that's what's presented in the project plan. With this, we would be asking that you close the public hearings, which include the amendment to the project plan, as well as development agreement, which includes that issuance of IRBs. And this action today does require a two-thirds vote to make sure that we're on that. With that, we are going to have Mark Manning come up and speak a little bit more about the, the financing that goes into this and the stadium.
So I got a full board of people who want to ask questions. Sorry. I, I guess we could, I'd ask the members if you want to wait until the end of the presentation to go ahead and remove your name. If you wanted questions to, up to this point of presentation, then I'm going to call you on you in order. Councilmember Johnson.
[inaudible]
Councilmember, all right. Director Manning, you're, you're up. All right. Apologies, I just want to make sure that if there was something particular to that presentation and members had a question in particular to that, we, we stop and we give time for that. If it's more global as far as the question, then we can wait until staff's done. So I apologize to the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. Mark Manning, Director Finance. I wanted to provide a little bit more of a holistic view now of this project and the funding sources for it, and tie in to what Kathy and Mark both mentioned. So as you know, the West Bank area, the Delano area, the stadium improvement project area include a variety of city resources, Star Bonds, CID District, Tax Increment Financing, and GEO Financing. So I want to talk about the first three of those and talk about the importance of this project and, and why it's very important for the cash flows in, in those particularly funding sources. TIF, of course, is based on new assessed valuation, which is why the development that they proposed is very important to us. That valuation will create the TIF increment that will be used to retire those bonds and to provide the pay-as-you-go financing. The CID and Star Bond cash flows, of course, are generated by the retail development in that area. And again, so that's why the retail component of their project plan is very important for the financing of this. And I would point out that these districts are open for a limited amount of time, typically 20 years. That's why it's very important that we have rapid expansion of these projects. And again, as Kathy mentioned, they've, have accelerated the time, timeline. So that is very advantageous for the city in financing these. There's a couple of other ancillary benefits of this development. Hotels generate transient guest tax. Now, that's not specifically included in the financing of this model, but it is an additional revenue stream to the city Wichita. Finally, the sales tax captured from this generally goes to the Star Bond District, but we also do have a very small slice of that sales tax that is not captured in the Star Bond District and is instead retained in our sales tax pledge fund. That pledge fund, of course, is the one that we use to fund street and freeway and bridge improvements. So there is a cash flow to the city from all this development that will benefit our, our ability to finance roads and freeways and bridges. So I'll dive down into, again, Star Bonds, CIDs, and TIFs with a couple of quick slides here. Again, we mentioned, we issued a little over $40 million in 2018, our debt services through 2023. Now, there's three funding sources for this Star Bond that we have issued for the stadium. That is the amount currently held by the State of Kansas or our trustee that's available for debt service. There's also the amount generated from Phase 1 of the Star Bond District, which is generally everything on the east side of the Arkansas River. And then there is the revenue generated by Phase 2, which is everything on the west side of the river. The Star Bond pro forma that was designed in 2018 and the one today is based on the expansion of Phase 2. That is critical for the pro forma for Star Bonds is the expansion of Phase 2, which, of course, is what the project plan you heard today is focused on. As the manager, I think, mentioned a week or so ago, there is a backstop for Star Bonds, and that is the annual appropriation of pledge of local sales tax dollars that is included each year. So here's a visual of what we would expect the Star Bonds to look like. The blue line on the top is the revenues, and the darker black line is the cumulative debt service. These are cumulative amounts. Obviously, we want the blue line to be above the black line. You can see at the beginning in 2022, as I noted, we have about $7 million in the bank right now with the State of Kansas. So that's, that's why the lines are spread there. You can, you can see through about 2027, we expect that gap to widen. In 2027, 2028, that's when Phase 1 will expire, that's why the gap closes a little bit. But the takeaway on this slide is, based on the proposal that you've heard today and the pro formas that we've developed after that, we believe that there will be a gap between revenues and expenditures, which is a good thing, which what I'm showing you here is that we will generate sufficient revenues to retire our Star Bonds. Again, I noted we have 6.9 million sitting right now with our trustee. Phase 1 is generating an increment and has for years, and it's going to continue to generate increment through 2028. I would also point out that Phase 2 is also generating an increment. That started last year with the stadium's first full year of operation. But again, the point is, we need that small increment to grow, and we need it to grow rapidly, and that's what this, this plan is all about, and that's why it's very, very important to the Star Bonds. Let's jump to CID real quick. Also, the CID is creating an increment right now. We collected about a quarter million dollars last year, so it is performing as we expected. The question, the issue is whether it's performing to the magnitude. And again, that is based on the expansion of sales in this area. So the retail sales from this development would be captured in the CID. I'd point out that we don't have any CID debt currently, we have not issued it yet. Likely, we will this fall or earlier next spring. So let's take a look at what we expect the cash flows on the CID to look like. Again, the blue line, or the, I guess it's blue, the blue line is our revenues and the black line is our cumulative debt service. We may have a gap in the first few years, that's relatively common on incremental financing. But the takeaway is the huge gap that we expect to mature over the life of this CID. In other words, we expect the CID to more than offset all the debt service costs that we will incur. But again, the key is generating CID revenue and Star Bond revenue as early as possible in this area. Now, takeaway, the slide I just showed you is based on a very, very simple amortization model. We typically try to structure our bonds a little bit more in line with the revenue stream, which will flatten out that gap that you saw in the first couple of years. So I, I point that out, but over the 20-year term, as you can see from the previous chart, we would have a coverage ratio of about 150%. In other words, we would expect, expect revenues over the, over the term to be about 50% higher than our debt service needs. And finally, let's talk about TIF. It'll be very similar to the previous slides. Again, the important thing is this new project plan increases the increment, and it also accelerates the increment by accelerating the private development. Both of those are very, very, very important to our CID financing. So here's what the CID, or I'm sorry, TIF, here's what the TIF model looks like. Again, you can see that the blue and black lines will be pretty much on top of each other for the first 10 years or so. It's not uncommon for TIFs to have minor deficits in the first few years, and that's generally offset by the huge tail on the right-hand side. You can see that graphically in this slide right here. Again, accelerating the development will increase the increment faster, which will help us retire the bonds sooner. And it'll also generate a potential large amount at the end of the term. That was kind of what Mark Elder was talking about a couple of minutes ago. So as I noted, that TIF model I just showed you is very comparable to what you would typically see anytime we would present a TIF to you. Again, that was just based on a very simple level principle and interest amortization model. A lot of times, we'll try to structure the debt around the specific revenues, which again, kind of smoothes out some of those bumps in the first few years. And also, I used a 15-year amortization. We typically don't like to go to 20, but certainly that's an option if we needed to. So just to kind of wrap up everything I said, in summary, and I'm probably being a little bit redundant here, but this new project plan would generate about $13 million in those ancillary revenues that I mentioned earlier. That's local sales tax, again, which we're going to use to fund roads, bridges, and freeways, and it's also in transient guest tax revenues. Again, development is accelerated, that is enormously important. The sooner development happens, the sooner we begin collecting the increment, is the sooner we can retire our bonds. And finally, I think, as Kathy noted, the, the development is expanded from the original proposal, which will increase TIF capacity and specifically the garage. That's the end of my slides.
All right. Is there any more reports from staff on this? If not, we'll start getting into the questions from the councils. With that, Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Had a few different questions on a few different things we saw. So my first question is around the parking garage. I know the TIF funds and grants are used for some of the public benefit. One of the slides said there were 283 spaces that would be in that garage, so how many of those are for the public and free?
That's a great question, Councilmember Kathy Sexton, you're Assistant City Manager. I'm sorry. Yeah. So for the parking garage, it, there are details to be figured out, but essentially there are numbers set aside for the hotel and the office users. And then for non-game days, there's a lot available. I'm trying to remember the number. Is it 75 for the office and the, 85, that's right, we've changed 85. 85 total is for the office and the hotel folks. So there's a lot. There's over two, there's 200 available for the public on a day-to-day basis. Of course, when there are events there at the stadium, that changes a little bit.
Okay, so that answers my next question. So on game days, that won't be free parking?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, I've been seeing different numbers. In our original agreement with the team, was that number of events 200?
The parking garage?
Or was it 150 or, no, for the, for the team, the number of events happening at the stadium? Was that 200 in the original agreement?
The agreement doesn't list a number of events, it lists the types of activities that are allowed in the stadium and encouraged to be in the stadium.
Okay, I, I feel like we had talked about 200. So the number is 150 to 175, and that's what we'll see as far as events in the stadium going forward.
Team has to address that in terms of what their target is. The owner, original owner Lou, is the one that talked about a 200 number. Our development agreement, I don't believe, lists a number. It just, yeah.
Well, my concern is, like, on the slide, it said 150 to 175, so if we're saying that publicly and then it's not in writing, then we don't do it. Like, that's where we'll get our criticism from. Because we're saying, on the slide, it said 150 to 175.
Jordan is here. I don't know if anyone else wants to address that, but I think it's fair to say it's a goal. There, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of games, there's hope for other events. I know the city wants to have some events there. So it's a goal, but it's not like a contract. And Jordan is here representing the team, so I'll step aside for him.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Mr. Mayor, Members of the council, I'm Jordan Coberts, CEO of the Windsurge and also CEO of Wichita Riverfront LP. As the city manager indicated, the original agreements with the city that the team executed list the various types of events that we hope to hold in the ballpark. I think I passed on a list of events recently to the city manager. I think it was shared with some of the council members, if not all. And I think if you look at that list, it is a representative, at least in year one. We do have a 20-year lease with two five-year options, but in year one, I do believe we fulfilled the intent of our agreement in terms of the type of events that were held at the ballpark. My good friend and former managing general partner of the Windsurge liked to use the figure of 200 events a year. It was kind of a nice round number, and certainly it was a laudable goal, but I prefer to under-promise and over-deliver. And I think last year, it was somewhere between 100 to 120 events total. And we do hope to get to the level of 150 to 175 over a period of time. That is not in the development agreement, it is a goal, and it is something we have talked to the hotel operator about, because of course, they're interested in the number of events that are held in the ballpark as well.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a couple more questions. So in 2019, part of my support of the expanded TIF was the Delano neighborhood improvements. And now we're seeing that there was one thing that we didn't actually do, so those improvements... And now we're seeing that there was one thing that we didn't actually do, so those improvements haven't happened. So have we double and triple-checked that if approved today, that type of improvement could happen and will happen?
Yes, I think that's fair to say. Some of what we're doing with the TIF amendment is just stuff that needs to be updated, and there's so many different agreements and documents involved. But yes, we have every intention of proceeding with various projects, CIP and otherwise, over the next several years.
Okay. My last question, I, I'm excited about speeding this up by two years, but is that really possible right now with the supply chain issues? I mean, if they order tomorrow, Aaron, it could be next year before they even get steel or something like that. So would it really be sped up or kind of a wash?
Austin's going to come up to address that. He's obviously been working hard on this project.
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. We've been working with multiple contractors in light of your question, and obviously, we're aware of the environment. So we are comfortable with it. There's some things we can do, fast track construction, you know, issue footing foundation package, some of those kind of things to address it. Obviously, we know what we know today, and we don't know, you know, what's coming tomorrow. But at this point in time, we do think that's realistic.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Boobah.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And, and a lot of my questions were about the events as well. I would like us, can we go back and look at the video? Staff, go back and look and see whenever we did the evening meeting and, and what that number exactly was. I, I used 200. That's what I thought I heard. Susie Santos said that she remembered 300. I don't know that I remembered that, but I thought it was around 200. But I did think it was more than just a goal. I thought, I thought it was a little bit of a community promise that we were making there, so kind of like to distinguish the action there. And I will say, spoken to Jordan on this, appreciate, you know, his description, it's a foundation, and, and no one's going to fault him for last year, I don't think, you know? He meant the commitment under conditions that you normally couldn't make it. So I appreciate what he is doing to, to bring, because that, that is what we sold the ballpark to everyone on, was it wasn't just baseball, it was overall community events. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and ask a little bit more about the development. Specifically, I'm trying to figure out how many square foot we're looking at for retail, and how many restaurants or places that, you know, not, not just for the, for the office tenants or the employees there, but for, for overall, which tends to be engaging in coming down there and setting down the eat or, or utilizing the community facility.
Yeah, it's a great question. West of McLean, we have about, in the development agreement, a 15,000 square foot minimum at-grade retail as part of that. On the east side of McLean, as part of the hotel, one thing we liked about this operator specifically is they are, put a whole lot of emphasis on food and beverage, and we think that fits the area. And so we'll have an at-grade restaurant and possibly, you know, the rooftop craft cocktail, light food, fair type environment, likely both. Those aren't part of the development agreement either, but that's, that's part of the core business of this operator in particular. So if you include those two, I'm going to generalize, you know, that's about 6,000 square feet plus the 15 minimum in the DA. You're talking over 20,000 square feet of retail in addition to the office and the hotel as well.
So, so what does that look like as far as how many restaurants? Or, or coffee shops or brew pubs or whatever?
Yeah, it's a great question. Obviously, that's user dependent. I can say we're talking to one user right on the corner of McLean and Maple right now. They're a 5,000-foot user trading in LOI. You know, the hotel would, would be operated, those, those facilities would be operated by the hotel operator, so that's not a, that's not a third party coming in to lease, which I think is best practice, ensuring kind of a cohesive delivery. You know, you're probably talking an additional three users, you know, so that's probably over five in total. And of course, that, you could have an entertainment user come in and have a 10,000-foot space, and that, that would go down. So it's totally user dependent.
Several years ago, whenever we did the River Vista development?
Yeah.
It was a big deal to the public to make sure we did not take access from the river. There wasn't any fences or gates or private utilization that the public still can't get to the river. Are we looking, are we going to have any hindrances here where the public can't utilize?
Not at all. I'd, I'd refer back to that slide I shared. I mean, that's the, the beauty of the, the ARPA funds, is, is we can put $5 million into the riverfront and bring in the public. I mean, we have no interest in kind of, you know, segmenting that and making that private to hotel users. We're going to encourage, you know, the flow of pedestrian activity through the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. A quick question. What is our occupancy rate currently for office buildings in the city? Do we have any idea what the, the need is for additional office space in the city?
It's a great question, and I'm afraid I don't have an answer in terms of the whole city, but I'll tell you this. There's different types of office space, and some people value those offices being in different locations, right? So since you all addressed this issue in December, and Austin can speak to it directly, but my understanding is, he's back here today, moving, building two instead of one and moving everything up because he got so much interest in so many potential tenants for the office space in particular, because, and partly because in that post-pandemic world, I think we've all been wondering, well, how many people are going back to the office? Or are offices going to downsize, for example? And, and one thing that we're learning is, is that some office users, they're looking for quality space in unique environments with handy restaurants and, and entertainment and walking paths along the river and views and things like that. So a quality of space that maybe they haven't, don't have in their current spot. Maybe they have too much square footage now in their current spot because maybe folks are working from home, but maybe a smaller office, but a nicer place with more amenities and a better location. I think that's what's really driving this investment in our river area.
So you're pretty confident that we'll be able to fill these?
Yes, and like I say, Austin is, has run the numbers and is familiar with negotiations. And so if they weren't familiar, if they weren't confident, EPC, they wouldn't be putting up their millions of dollars to do the project. So yes, we're confident.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if it would be helpful, Jeff Flohr has some more detailed information regarding an office survey that's been done downtown and could give you a better idea on occupancy and, and demand.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Councilman, part of our work this last year, if you remember, when we started Project Downtown, which has really been the strategy to create what you see happening right now in the core, it's built and understanding the market demands. Where are the opportunities within residential hospitality, office space? We have found that to be very much a strong foundation in order to be able to look at projects like this as they come forward. So this last year, with everything that's been working through COVID, we actually did market analysis prior to the pandemic, and we had strong opportunities in all three of those. So last year, we re-asked the question because we wanted to make sure that as we're working with the city to make strategic public investment, as you're considering today, then also working with the public sector, that we had really strong information. So we actually redid that analysis and found that this project helps fulfill a market demand that's there in office, also in what's happening with hospitality. And the thing that, that, to, to build on what Kathy was saying, is that we are backfilling current space in our downtown. Nova Coast is a company that you've heard a lot about, was backfilling space in the Epic Center. So we're backfilling space, but we also need new product like this to be able to offer companies that are here, but also those that we're trying to attract. Because Kathy is correct, today's construction, there are a lot of different amenities, different capabilities that a building needs to be able to offer. I do believe too, because of the location of the project that we're talking about today, that there is high probability to be able to secure tenants for those locations, because again, the desirability of being close to major anchors, like we're talking about with the ballpark and the riverfront. So we've been working with the development group and understanding what they want to build, and then how that fulfills what we see as a market potential, and, and they do match. So hopefully, that, and that's information you heard that it went through the downtown investment policy process. That was taken into consideration as well as part of that. So those are some of the questions that are asked to make sure that not only your investment is strategic, but also the private sector, we have the highest probability of success that we can as we work on that aspect as well.
Thank you. Were there any additional projects that we're going to fund throughout Delano with any of the TIF expansion? Or is it, are we just focusing on the immediate area around the ballpark?
Well, this project development agreement today is with EPC Real Estate, and it's just to get these buildings built and get these businesses open. Then they'll be generating the TIF revenues into the city. And so then I think it's more, I think what you're getting at, and help me if I'm misunderstanding your question, that there will be more investments, as noted earlier, in Delano area, the whole area, in terms of some of the improvements. There's a trail that's in design right now, for example.
Okay, yeah, I just remember in the original, I believe, the 2017 vote, that there were additional projects that were going to get funded through this, not just the, the ballpark and the development around it, but just some things for the community as well.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure that that's still on the plan.
Mr. Mayor, when the council approved the expansion of the TIF district, parking was listed as a high priority. And so I think one of our next phases, next public projects that we'll look at will be Douglas Avenue parking.
Yeah, the, is that the, the additional parking garage?
No, this will be on-street parking. There's a deficiency in Delano, especially as you go farther west on Douglas, and that was discussed by the council as a priority.
Yeah, sometimes it's hard to find parking for Picassos. What attendance rates are our figures based on for the, the return from the, the ballpark to pay down the star debt?
Attendance at games?
Yeah.
Hmm. You know, a star debt, that's a great question. I don't know that, I know that. Attendance rates at the games?
Yeah.
How much revenue is coming in in sales taxes?
If you remember the public, if you could stay in order while we get through the staff, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Mark Elder, Office of Economic Development. The, I do not have the number in front of me for what was projected back in 2017 for the star bond, but I'll, I'll say two things on that. One is, they, they projected for the, the level of team that we have today. So it's, and Jordan can address how that's mirroring up to what was projected. The star bond is also looking at, with the stadium and with the tenants there, what other development has kicked off to create additional sales tax revenue in there. So the stadium itself is just one small element of what will be contributing sales tax revenue to the star bond payments.
Okay, yeah, I can just, that, that's the whole concern for me here is, that's the reason I'm taking a look at this is because I'm afraid that we're going to come short in our star bond payments in the future, and I don't want to pay out of the, the general fund, is avoid that as much as possible. So that ties into my next question. I saw that the, the hotel tax, is that going to continue to go into the hotel tax fund, the transient fund? Are we not planning on putting some of that maybe into paying debt services?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah. We're not under our, the requirements of both T-bid as well as guest tax. Those funds have to go into the two specific funds. And, and so not anticipating that we would use that revenue to pay off baseball stadium debt. Instead, it'll be used for C2 improvements and other eligible expenses out of the guest tax, and T-bid automatically goes, it goes straight into the T-bid fund and has to be used for marketing expenses.
Okay, is that something possibly we could look at in the future?
I don't believe the state law allows you to do that.
All right. Yeah, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Ballard.
Excuse me. These are some questions that I have talked to you about in the past. I just wanted to ask them in a public setting, just because there's been a lot, I've gotten a lot of emails, a lot of feedback, just to clear some things up. So my first question would be, what are the revenue-producing opportunities going to be in this district?
That's a great question, and, and we can get caught up sometimes in all our acronyms, but essentially, when we build these buildings, they start bringing in property taxes. And of course, when they start operating businesses in them, if they're retail and they're hotel, then they're bringing in sales taxes, and as Manager noted, the guest tax and the T-bid tax as well. So all these revenue sources are what we use in all these projections.
Thank you. We've talked a little bit about this, but what is, what is the active plan to create more opportunities at the stadium outside of the Windsurge? So I know we've talked a little bit about that. I think Jordan is, is working on that. I just hope that we put a lot more emphasis on that because this was sold as a multipurpose park, so I would hope that we are able to focus a little bit more on that.
Yes, and I thank you for bringing that up because I think post-COVID, everybody's interested in events, and how do we modify them to be things that people will come out to, and how do we make this area part of our communities, you know, place you want to go to? So I think we're well on that way, and, and your point is well, well noted that we will emphasize that going forward.
Thank you. Is there any way to ensure that every business doesn't add an additional tax or fee?
No, not that I know of. I mean, businesses, as you know, there's, there's value in public-private partnerships. There's also limitations in what government can dictate to businesses. So certainly, the, you know, we'll do the best we can, but no, I don't think there's a way for the city to control businesses.
Okay, thank you. What did you assume were the interest rates on our bonds when this project was first calculated, and what do you anticipate they are now?
Great, great question. We all know interest rates are rising, so those numbers are definitely different from before when they were estimated to be about 3.5% for government bonds for city issuing debt, which is always less than private sector can issue debts anyway. But then now recently, I think we're, we're using 6% as that estimate, and that's for the private company to do their own financing.
Thank you. How will construction affect McLean and surrounding streets?
Yeah. You know, isn't that always the thing we care about, is how, how are we going to get around? And, and I'm sure that, you know, at some points during construction, there'll be some issues on, on street traffic. But generally speaking, the street will remain open during construction. As far as I know at this time, there's a lot of work to be done to figure out the construction project, but there might be times when it would be closed or down to one lane or something like that, and we'll notify the public as best we can.
Okay, thank you. And I think I know the answer to this, but will the offices be used by the Windsurge or rented out to business, or leased out to businesses?
Oh, yes. Businesses are definitely targeted for the office space. If the Windsurge itself and their office, you know, they need more of that space, then they would be paying whatever market rates there are available to them.
Okay, great. And if, for some reason, that we were to look for a new team other than the Windsurge, how would this deal for the development be affected?
You know, that's an interesting point because really, this deal isn't about the team. It's not about the, the games or the, or the team itself. This is about the developer, like Austin's representing, to build hotel and garage and offices. So I don't see any impact today, today on what you're voting on that will be anything remotely relative to this team or any other team.
Okay, I think maybe they were just asking, because it's kind of tying the whole project together, like we have the stadium, we're so far into the project, and this is kind of coming up on the last phases, and just to kind of tie it all together. So it is, it is kind of centered around the Windsurge since that's at the stadium.
Absolutely, yeah. I, I totally get it. They're, you know, there's concern about various things, but today, it's really, it's really focused on moving the private development forward so that we can start getting the tax revenues needed to pay for the stadium that we're starting to enjoy having already.
Okay, and then last question. Can the developer show that they have exhausted all other financial resources before applying for the TIF? And if so, what are they?
Yes, yes. I think Mark Elder's first slide talked about the project gap, and I think that's what we were trying to get across there, that the developer has met their requirements of saying, okay, I've talked to the banks and I've done what I can do, and here's my gap in financing, and that's why I need the, the public incentive.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure, sure.
I just want to piggyback on that. That's, that's part of, you know, what we do on all of these projects, and this one, I, I think that's evident by the, you know, securing the ARPA funds, you know? So if, if we were not fortunate to secure the ARPA funds, which is state, not city, the TIF request would probably be doubled, you know? So by that diligent effort, we were able to kind of cut that in half to minimize the impact from that regard. So absolutely.
Thank you.
So Kathy, you do a really good job, if I may compliment you, on talking, I think, us, us through these more complex mechanisms that we utilize for, for economic development. Can you just address briefly, I, I think there are folks who believe, at least in, in the comments I've been tagged in, that the incentives are actually a check, that we're just signing off and giving to businesses. off and giving to businesses or developers, and I get stuff about, why aren't you spending that money over here or there? My understanding, and please help me, so I can explain, and if I'm wrong, is that this money is money that we're not collecting at this time, because nothing's there at this time. So to continue to not collect that while they build an economic engine there, we're not actually losing money, because we weren't getting money anyways. So what we're doing is actually foregoing taxes on, or taking that tax money and re-putting it back into that district, instead of letting it go up to the state. And the benefit is the other taxation that comes from having that amenity there, and also with folks traveling and participating in that area. Is that, if I was explaining this to, or someone was explaining this to me in those simple terms, would you agree with that assessment, or is there anything I'm missing on that?
No, absolutely, I think you're absolutely right, that it's difficult, right? We all think, you know, you hear about numbers on headlines and news stories, and you think this is like some sort of check we're writing, but I know that this city, you know, years ago, got out of the business of upfront cash for developers, right? So that's not a common thing anymore, but when we invest in public-private partnerships like this, the whole idea is saying, but for this public help, this private development would not happen. And so the only way to get the tax money in to then use it for the project, some of it for the project for a short period of time, is to build the project, commit that, and then after it's successful, and our debts are paid off, so to speak, our commitment to the project's paid off, then those taxes then revert back to the rest of the public needs. So if it were money upfront that competes with all the other many needs, that would be in your budget process, right? But if it's coming from economic development staff, it's because we're trying to think of ways the community can invest that will help, and they're public-private partnerships, it takes private money as public money, way more private money than the public money involved. But it is future revenues coming in after the development gets built, absolutely.
And that's part of our modeling, where if, and I guess that's that slide, where if this amenity is here, and it's creating this much as economic activity, that's going to have this much in return. So that's the investment part, is by not, for example, we are foregoing sales tax on building material, and it looks like, well, you just gave them all this money, but the reality is, it's sales tax money, the reality is, if they don't build this, we don't get any sales tax money anyways, because they're, so it's, it's not that we're giving that money out, it's just forgiving the sales tax money for building materials so they can build this, because by building that, our modeling and economic projections show, once you build this, then we actually get this much money later.
A greater return on our investment than what we put in, yes, absolutely.
Okay, but it's not hitting our bottom line, like our, it's not coming out of the budget. If we were to forgive, let's say, construction, sales tax, to allow this to continue during inflation, we're not actually, that money isn't coming out of our funds.
Right.
It's just, we're not collecting the sales tax, because we want to encourage you to build this, because in the end, it actually adds to our tax base. Is that a correct way to discuss this?
Absolutely. We invest a little bit upfront to get more return later.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make that as clear as possible, that we're not laying off firefighters in order to do this, or foregoing our other needs, that this is, it's more complex, and it's not a check getting written to someone, it's foregoing particular taxes so we can get revenue benefits from that.
Yes.
Okay, is there further discussion for staff? See you now, we're opening up to public comment. Thank you, Director Sexton, and I apologize for calling you Kathy.
Okay, my name is Allen Trinari, I live in North Riverside. I came out here from Colorado, 2009, 2010, after being chewed up and spit out by the processes in Colorado, that I got the ball rolling on, that I've heard some bile poured out concerning the CBD, or whatever you want to call it. I've personally seen some great things happen due to the tree of life, the hemp cannabis industry, but I've also been hurt very badly by it, by law enforcement over it. I'm bitter, okay? That's all I can say about it, is I'm very bitter about the opportunities lost in order to promote alcohol, beer, so on and so forth. Oh, wow. I'll leave it at that. My companion, her name was Jackie Edwards, was exposed to antibiotic-resistant bacteria during surgery. It took 10 years for it to kill her. I have personally cared for and grown medical marijuana, created concentrated medical cannabis oil, cured, put into remission, extreme prostate cancer, terrible diabetic ulcers using medical cannabis. Tired of people saying, oh, marijuana is so bad. It's not. It's non-toxic. I personally OD'd on alcohol in 1978, nearly died, because somebody bet me that I couldn't drink grain alcohol straight, and being young and stupid, I said, oh, watch. I woke up in the emergency room, hooked up to monitors after nearly dying, twice after being exposed to the grain alcohol. I'm begging that, you know, this is being done on the public dime for the baseball people, that's what's being pushed here, that we're trying to get the general public to back the construction and expenditures for the baseball stadium, while the potential economic benefit of cannabis, medical cannabis, industrial hemp, you take hemp seed and press it, get the oil out of the hemp seed, and you ferment what's left over after you press the seed, and make grain alcohol with the seed, the exchange rate is 90% to create a biodiesel, and it creates non-toxic byproducts, and you make the fuel with the hemp seed. The economic benefit that can be achieved utilizing hemp and cannabis would far outweigh expenditures, and, you know, would be a win-win situation, instead of putting people in jail over it. When you arrest somebody for cannabis and you put them in jail, it turns into a public expense that's a losing proposition. All I'm asking is that we end persecution of the tree of life of cannabis in order to expand the economy, rather than creating deficit by persecuting and continuing the Jim Crow policies going after people on this issue, could so greatly benefit society in general. On that note, I'll stop bothering you about it. I appreciate your service. I admire you all for the work that you do for us, thank you. Please take it into consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Sybil Strom, I recite at 326. Here we go again, the taxpayers are paying. You just said there is inflation going on in the world. There are people out there suffering because you want us to pay for the ballparks and other industries. They're hurting. Us taxpayers are hurting. I'm hurting. I just told you about my daughter, she works the spirit, she goes at first shift, she fixes airplanes, she's hurting. She's a single parent, raising her daughter, and she's going through full closure. Already, the electricity has gone up, gas has gone up, everything's gone up. You want us to flip the bill. We don't have the money. You need to get that wind surge to pay for it, out of their own pockets. I have been down to other places, I mean, I've talked to people, I'm not even with the city council, and I'm not the mayor or vice mayor, but every day, they're saying, we're done, we want our money, we want to go places, we want to pay our bills. And my one daughter commented, there are too many hotels, there are less houses, and the apartments are so bad, that she tried to get in an apartment, and she found out that the Rivers View, and Kathy Sexton knows about that, was expensive to get in. We need the businesses to step up to the plate. If you want that business, and if you want to make that change, do it on your own money. Stop taking from the taxpayers. We are drained, like I told you, I'm paying the mortgage, it's like $20,000. I didn't want that house, I was forced to have it. I was forced to go to the same bank that they want it. I told Brandon Johnson about it, I told you about it, Mayor Whipple, I was forced. That was wrong, and nobody wanted to help me. I went to the midnight housing, nobody wanted to help me. I ended up paying for my own, paying a contractor I didn't even know, paying for a loan that I didn't even get. I didn't meet the Fidelity Bank lawyer, I mean, Fidelity Bank president, I was forced. My house was torn down, I didn't even know about it. I didn't even know about it. I was done at my daughter's house, we went down Walnut, and there it is, torn down. This is not what the community has to do. We do not have to pay for businesses to be put up or remodeled, and that's the way I feel. Thank you, goodbye.
Next speaker, please.
I asked questions about this proposed stadium project at the April 5th city council meeting. Mayor Whipple, you questioned the figures I used, so today I will hold up every single city document I used for my numbers. I will quote page numbers so you can find them for yourself later. Two of my questions from April 5th are still unanswered. First, has anyone found out why a TIF development can protest the appraised value of the property? It applies to IRBs too. Second, city staff has my questions on development, and I'm still waiting on answers. Thank you, Councilwoman Tuttle, for asking for them to get back to me, I appreciate that. I speak up because there is zero transparency on how STAR, TIF, and CID projects are doing. There is no accountability when the city makes mistakes in giving developers money. We have undeveloped land in Waterwalk frozen under a 99-year lease. We have undeveloped land around the ballpark, because the ball club owners want some sort of incentive to build on the land we sold them for a dollar an acre. So here's $2 to buy back the two acres. If wind surge owners don't want to pony up and follow through on their development plans to build retail space around the ball stadium, then use this money to buy the land back and find someone else willing to do it. I'll buy it. Finances are never explained to taxpayers when you spend our money, so how can we tell if you're throwing good money at bad? First, why are you letting economic staff make up revenue estimates for this project? They miscalculated stadium revenue. Paid consultants' development strategies came around with revenue estimates of $400,000 in 2021 for the ballpark, that's on page eight of their paid project. City staff thought the stadium would do better than that, and estimated over 1 million of new sales tax revenue. This is found in the official statement, page 14. Actual revenue was at 600,000, this is found in the 2021 annual Star Bond report, page 27. I don't make up numbers, but we missed our targets on revenue, and it's in the annual Star Bond report. This is almost 50% less than city staff guessed. We would have been better off using the original consultant numbers. Now the city is tapping revenue from an earlier Star Bond district to help meet debt payments on the new stadium, and that was on a slide that was presented earlier. After 20 years, 2028 on the slide, the new stadium has to pay Star Bond debt on its own, but ball stadium attendance numbers are down. Is that because stadium owners have tacked on an 8% development fee for purchases? Taxes are 18% inside the stadium, and could be this much in the new development. I paid $6 for an ice cream sandwich, and $18 for one beer. What's interesting about this tax is I was charged more than 2%, which is supposed to be the cap in the CID. So who's verifying the CID tax rates that are charged in the ball stadium? Staff also miscalculated drawing visitors from outside the city, and I can, this is kind of complicated, but in the Star Bond report, we used to not provide visitor numbers, but now the state has required it. And so the numbers for the ball stadium, again, out of the 2021 Star Bond report, visitors coming from over 100 miles was less than 300,000. This is grossly under the projections that this was supposed to bring. And the problem with Star Bond projects is we promise it's going to pull in visitors from outside 100 miles. If it doesn't, if we build new office space and we merely shift business from one part of town to another, this is not new incremental income, it's a shifting of business. So these numbers in the Star Bond report, I hope you all read them, are critical to see if we're meeting these targets for outside visitors. We're also not earning enough to pay Star Bond debt, and on page 16 of the official Star Bond project, that's on here, want to make sure you see I'm not making the numbers up, on page 16, it shows the debt payments. We're not getting enough revenue to meet these payments, and this is where we're being tapped to make up the payment. And where you can see this in the budget is the notes to the annual financial statement, it's called the CAFR. The CAFR explains how we have pledged money to make these debt payments when there's not enough revenue. And there's even a footnote on page 364 of the annual budget that shows we have pledged revenues to make these debt payments. City manager Layton also wrote to Robert North to get permission to tap other sources of revenue on Star Bonds. Did you know this? He should have copies of these letters in his file dated 2018 and 2017 to get permission. to get permission to tap other funds for these Starbonds. That's why you're speeding up this development. I'm running out of time, so I'll end by saying one other thing. Federal ARPA funds should be used to help citizens like Delano residents who are reeling from COVID. Building a sky bridge or doing sidewalk projects, to me, doesn't meet the heart of ARPA funds from the federal government. So be honest, be transparent, start showing if we really are making money from these projects. And if you aren't, like the Eastside TIF, it's $5 million in arrears. Please study the numbers so that when citizens ask you if the project's doing well, you answer honestly and just say yes or no. This $2 offer still stands. Are there any questions while I have these documents here? All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Ballard.
Minister, can you address any of the things that she's talking about?
I think the difference, you received a presentation from Mark Manning regarding our projections for the revenue sources that support debt for the stadium. And that, all of that was based on the approval of this plan. I think the difference between what Mark presented and what Ms. Rosette just presented is her numbers are based on today's activity. Mark's numbers are based on what's projected going forward. So all of our debt service obligations would be met through STAR, CID, and TIF under, over the period of the debt if this project is approved. And that's what Mark's projections show. And it's simply just a point in time when you review the documents.
Can you speak to the over 2% CID that she was talking about? Is that what you said, Celeste? We're charged more than 2% for the CID?
We've got to talk to the team about their point-of-sale system because I've seen different receipts that show it differently. And I think there's at least one receipt I've seen where it looked like the state sales tax and the CID were rolled in together, and another where it was shown separately. So we'll get with the team and make sure there's a standard way of reporting the CID piece.
Okay. Can you report that back to the council? Thank you.
Councilmember Fry.
Thank you. There was also the question about poaching or allowing companies to move from one part of the town to this development. I think we had that restriction in the current agreement. Confirm that? That stays?
That is correct, councilmember. And I believe it's two miles, if I remember correctly.
So nothing within the two miles can move into this?
That's correct.
Other part of town, other part of the region certainly can, but within two miles, it can't move to this?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Bob, just real quick. I know that it's true that we sold property. It was a dollar an acre. Did we just sell that, or was there any strings attached to that? Were there requirements for who purchased that property at a dollar?
Councilmember, yes, there were strings, right? It was sold to, there was an option for the sale of that property as long as the development schedule that was in the 2019 agreement was followed. And that's, those are the phases that we discussed, and that would be accelerated under the proposed project today.
So if somebody purchased, let's say, the $2 that were there, they would be required to spend multiple millions of dollars in investment to improve that area. They wouldn't just be able to purchase it?
Right. And just to give you some context, if I remember right, I think it's about 60 million that's being spent on the work in front of you today.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you. My name is Christopher Parrisho. I'm here representing Delano Neighborhood Association. When the first version of the TIF and even when the first amendment of the TIF were both proposed, the city reached out through entities in Delano such as Delano United and the Delano Neighborhood Association to inform the public of the plan, help answer questions, address concerns, and gather feedback. Why did that not happen this time? What has changed since then, which was prevented, which has prevented the city from continuing the types of engagement which they've effectively utilized in the past? When and where was the public outreach regarding this new change being proposed before you today? What opportunities and via what format did the public have to provide input? What boards and committees did this go before, prior to reaching the city council? Has this been before DAB 4 or DAB 6? How and when have the property owners who would be subject to the new TIF boundaries been contacted to inform them of the proposed inclusion of their properties so that they had an opportunity to respond to the proposal? When the city first proposed the TIF, the stadium project, they promised that there would be no residential properties included in the TIF district. I went through and I marked on your own map in red all the new residential properties that are now going to be subject to this TIF after being promised no such thing would ever happen. These are just a few of the many questions that have come up in the last few days since this proposed plan was finally made public. So I'm asking for two things. First, table or defer the vote on this proposed plan until the proper public hearings can be had and proper board presentations can be made, previous promises kept, and public feedback is incorporated into this proposal. Second, a new requirement be implemented immediately, that, that being that every development proposal involving taxpayer funding, which comes before the city council, must include a checklist which details when and where and how public outreach was done, when and where and how public feedback was acquired, what boards and commissions each action has gone before, with a summary of that board's vote, and it must be attached to the documentation in the agenda. If that documentation is not provided, then the default action by the city council should be to table or defer the item until it is provided. Thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle. Excuse me, Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Perusio, for being here today. Bob, can I ask two questions? Can you explain, and I know it's pursuant to our city ordinance, but we had a committee that was gathered together that was community members, business owners, I think, city staff. Can you explain that just a little bit so that the community knows what happened and that we did seek input? And I can't speak to if it went to other councilmembers, district advisory boards, but just regarding community input that we did solicit.
Just so we're clear, this isn't, if the person has just spoke and had five minutes, that's their five minutes. Okay. Just want to make sure, because if we get people who approach it, and we don't want to go back and forth, it eats up into other people's minutes and so on. So, yes, you can, all right, we're good. Kathy.
Yes, thank you. This, this project did go through a couple of weeks ago, the Downtown Development Review Committee. And this is the committee that's kind of ad hoc in the sense of some of the times the members change, but some of the members are ongoing. So we have someone on there representing a lending institution, a bank, that would help look at and vet the developer in question and the proposals they're making, as well as commercial realtor who's been good about, and I was in this meeting. It was very helpful to hear them weigh in. It gives us, the staff, additional information from people who are in this business to, to help vet the proposals. This time, we also did have two people who are business owners in Delano area. And they were looking at the design and the fix of the neighborhood, the fit with the neighborhood and, and that type of thing. So that was also very helpful input that they provided to us. And Jason Gregory was there with the Downtown Development Group. As you know, he has a long history with, with how do we develop things in this core area and how it all fits together? So thank you very much for asking that.
Yeah, thank you for your explanation. And then, Bob, my other question was, Mr. Perusio also mentioned residential property in the TIF district. Can you please address that, or Kathy, or whoever?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Mark, and Mark can come out up to help me out if, if that is helpful. I mean, generally speaking, it has no effect. Yes, the TIF district boundaries are being, in this action today, made consistent with the previous action, so we're all using the same map, but it does not affect those property owners. This is all about development, commercial development. And if there's incremental increases in their values, then, you know, maybe that goes toward that. But it doesn't affect their taxes. There's no new taxes for residents. There's no effect on their personal homes or properties by any actions you'd be asked to take today.
So I just want to say it again, and I know it's a little redundant, but just so the community understands, because this is complicated, and I always ask staff to explain it. They'd explain it to their neighbor at the mailbox. But residents who are in this TIF district will not see an increase in their property taxes.
Absolutely true.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fry.
I think the vice mayor asked the same questions that I was having, but thank you for explaining. There's also no new taxpayer funding request being part of this. There's no new taxes being, we've already established the CID policy. That's already been in place. Starbonds are not a new tax. There is no new taxpayer funding request as part of this action. Correct.
That's right. I mean, all these, this is an update on a project that was started years ago, and we're just giving the update. And really, you're ready to give the green light so we can start seeing construction of private businesses.
Yep. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I think Mr. Perusio was correct in the sense of, or not correct, but I, I feel that there should be neighborhood representation on that committee as well. If maybe a neighborhood association president or designee. I know that we sped this up to try to get to this, this day, so I don't think DAB was a part of that. But I would love to see going forward if a neighborhood representative was a part of that, just for communication's sake and getting the word back out to the neighbors in the community.
Thank you.
All right. Next speaker.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Vince Hancock on behalf of Delano United. For those of you not familiar with Delano United, that is where the businesses, the clergy, and the residents, and we're trying to get education in there so we can make sure that everybody's boat floats up together. So that when one does something well, we can all celebrate that, and when one has a concern, we can address it together. Do want to echo the previous sentiments about a lack of transparency in the process that brought this item before you today. I'm disappointed that rather appearing in front of DAB 4, it was heard by a secret advisory board known as DDIEC that do not appear to abide by the Kansas Open Meetings Act. That's not good. The 2017 revision of this plan is available on the city website as a text-based PDF. However, the new version that was in our packet today has been provided as a graphic PDF. It was printed, then rescanned on a Canon copier. This hinders searching the document on a computer and prevents extraction of segments for quotations. Hanlon's razor states, "Do not ascribe to malice that which can be explained by incompetence." I have no idea why city staff did that, but they made it very unusable. Obviously, somebody in their staff in 2017 was able to do it right. Now they're not. Why not? We need them to remake that document. I request that you read, that you direct the ED staff to attribute the staff report authorship in your agenda packet to a named staff member who provided this plan to us and then provide the plan as a text-based PDF before it is approved. The plan states words to the effect of, "The city of Wichita will construct a pedestrian bridge over the Arkansas River." Will construct. That is contrary to the neighborhood plan. The earlier slide said that this abides by the Delano neighborhood plan. That is incorrect. The phrase, "The neighborhood plan was passed by your body in 2019, and that plan recommended the evaluation of the long-swell pedestrian bridge in a 10- to 15-year time plan after the future of Century 2 had been decided." It's inappropriate to build that bridge before it becomes a bridge to nowhere. The new plan includes a parking garage that will be available to the public from 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM. It neglects to mention if this is free parking, as the current baseball stadium parking lot is. Lots of details that just aren't in this plan. We appreciate what each, what EPC brought to our Delano Kettles site, and their preliminary renderings today do look promising. It's just the first time we've ever seen them. This plan has changed significantly since the MOU you passed in December. As Kathy said, there are details to be figured out. Do you really want to make a contract or write a check with blanks that will be filled in later? If so, I've got a long-swell pedestrian bridge to sell you. We lack important details in this plan, and I ask that you engage the plant, the public, before you approve this plan. I'll stand for questions.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. One question for you. Are you referring to the pedestrian bridge over the river or the bridge that's between the hotel and the stadium?
Not the Skyway, the pedestrian bridge over the river. It's mentioned in this document as being a requirement that you will pass today. Or, you know, the neighborhood plan said, we're not going to say yes, we're not going to say no. In 10 to 15 years, we'll evaluate if it has need, and this plan takes that option away. It contravenes your previous actions.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hancock. And this question is for Bob. I appreciate you being here today. You mentioned, Mr. Hancock mentioned at the end of his comments about the city writing a check to EPC. Can you just confirm to the community that we are not actually giving money to anyone or check, no check is being written? Can you just emphasize or explain that one more time, just so we make sure the community understands? And this is to the manager, Mr. Hancock.
Right. I think, Councilmember, I think, or Vice Mayor, excuse me. I believe that Kathy addressed that issue in the discussion with the mayor in terms of what the nature of the incentives are and that it's not taking money out of the general fund and paying for improvements.
No, I just, I, I know it's redundant, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands that if the speaker mentioned it again, and he's been here the whole time, I don't think we can say it enough to the community that the city is not writing checks and writing checks with blanks in them. That's not what this is. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I rebut a mischaracterization of my statements?
Your five minutes is up. I really, the point of the public discussion is to share your information. We can't have a back and forth. That's, that's not a part of the.
I respect that. It's not what I intended.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fry.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, isn't the pedestrian bridge over the river a requirement of the Starbond district?
Councilmember Fry, that is correct. And also, that language is carryover from previous development agreement.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bluebaugh.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, I was just messaging with Becky Fields that does our neighborhood system. We, we've heard this at our DAB before. It's, it's been a while, but, but I'm sure we have. And I, was, was it not at DAB 6 at one time? I mean, I think it's, it's, we hear so much as council, you know, ahead of everything. I'm sure this was at my DAB, and I thought it was at DAB 6. Do you, do you have any dates, or do you remember that?
I may be a little fuzzy on the dates, but it would have been in 2021 when the last phase was approved. And the, the difference here is the acceleration of the office development. There hasn't been any other substantial change that would require the DAB review.
Really no change to the neighborhood or anything like that? I mean, because it was, it was all in the plan. It just happened faster.
Right. And I, I, I think Mr. Hancock and Mr. Parrisho would agree. We've gone, you know, the extra mile, I think, to communicate the early parts of this project and, you know, what happened after that. And so just the fact that this accelerated office development and took the last phase, a third phase, and rolled it in is really the only substantial change.
Thanks.
And we will continue to work with them if there are other parts of the development that move forward, other phases, including the development to the north.
Brother in private to public.
Mayor and Council, Dale Goder, 6th District resident. I don't want to take a lot of time and perhaps don't need any time at all. If you can assure me that you understand this question I'm going to ask. They kind of glossed over this relatively significant change in how the TIF is going to be funded. It's an $8 million TIF, and they said it would be a pay-as-you-go, and the developer would be assuming risk. Now, can you tell me the mechanics of that? Do you understand how that works? Pay-as-you-go means you've got money upfront to pay the project. I worked with the city. I worked with Mark Manning, who was a brilliant man. And on the Waterwalk, when that went south, they didn't issue bonds for that Starbond project. They went pay-as-you-go because they had money accumulated from the Gander Mountain that was already in place there. That made sense. Do you understand how that works? If you do, I'll go sit down, and one of you can call me afterwards and explain how this pay-as-you-go is a better deal and what that risk is that the developer is incurring that he wouldn't otherwise. TIF bonds are paid off by the property tax increase. So what risk is there regardless of who issues the bonds? Does this mean that the developer is issuing the bonds privately? If so, does that mean they are not tax exempt like municipal bonds are? There's 100 Starbonds. bonds are? There's 100 star bonds on the municipal market right today. You can go buy the riverfront star bonds for a thousand bucks apiece, but what does that mean? Do you, if you understand it, I'll go sit down, you can call me later, Mayor, and tell me that you understand how this works. You know, I missed the boat on the riverside housing thing. I wasn't here to ask questions. We're not going to let that get away this time. Maybe it makes sense, Mark Manning's a brilliant man, if he can explain how it does pay-as-you-go work.
Well, that's why we pay Director Manning and the manager the big bucks, right? So, Mr. Manager.
I'll give this, I'll give the simple explanation and let Mark then fill in the details. Yes, the, this debt is issued by the developer, not by the city, so it's not a traditional TIF in that we don't issue TIF bonds. The developer takes the responsibility, pays the expenses on the front end, and it gets reimbursed by TIF revenue as the development goes forward. However, the city also has to be left whole, so we have to meet our TIF obligation before the developer then gets their TIF to pay off the debt, and that's why we talk about a change in risk when we go to pay-as-you-go financing. And I can let Mark, if there's more details you want, I can let Mark talk about that.
Come on, Mark.
Good morning, and I don't have a whole lot more to add, other than what the manager mentioned, but he's exactly right. The reason why it is less risky for the city and why it averts risk for us and shifts it to the developer is because if we do not collect the increment over the amount required for our debt service, we are not going to provide that to the developer. It's pretty much that simple.
Mr. Goder, you still have two minutes left of your time. Is that, is that adequate, or?
Is it adequate for you? Do you understand that, that there is, in the end, whatever the source of that bonding, it's paid for with the TIF revenue. The property tax collected from the district pays off the bonds regardless of who issued them, correct? I mean, that's, that's a matter of fact.
Yeah, right. The TIF is pledged to pay off those bonds if, if they generate enough increment from their development. So they have, so if they don't generate enough increment, they're on the hook for the payment of that debt, and that's the difference between pay-as-you-go and the TIF, TIF bonds being sold by the city.
But there is no money accumulated at the beginning because there's no tax increment at that point.
And that's usually how they would structure their debt. They're on the risk then, they have risk on the front end, which would have been ours otherwise.
I'm a little skeptical about TIFs, obviously, but if you folks, I just wanted to be on your radar, that this is a different model. That always scares me when the developer's dictating, it seems as though the developer then has then taken control of the financing. I'm not sure that's a good idea, because under the old way, the city issues the bonds, is responsible for the marketing of them, the, and the payoff, and all that's kept in-house. All right. One last point, Mayor, you said about nobody gets paid up front. That's really not true. The Riverside Development, Riverside Housing one, for example, there's a sanitary sewer system that has to be put into place before that can be, go forward. Somebody has to pay for that. The TIF bonds pay for that. That's a check written to pay for that, which would otherwise be a developer expense. That's money up front. Okay? So there is, in that circumstance, the developer does get paid up front from revenues. Just, you know, it's small clarification, just like people to understand how it works. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Mr. Manager, Jeff Flure, President of the Graywood Shaw Partnership in downtown Wichita, located at 505 East Douglas Avenue. Also here today is Mr. Weaver from the Downtown Wichita Board, and I believe he'll have some comments in a moment. We, first of all, would like to express our support for this project. We think it's a critical next step in the development of our downtown, the riverfront, and our region as a whole. We've heard through various planning and strategy development, Project Wichita, Project Downtown, the talent research, the future of working workforce that we're going to be coming back to you in the next few weeks that we did with Deloitte. Investing in ourselves, investing in our riverfront, investing in our downtown is critical to our successes, not only today, but as we go forward. Developing a distinctive riverfront is imperative to retain talent and also to recruit talent. You see this going on across cities across North America right now, of them investing in themselves so that they can retain the talent they have, but also attract new talent into the market. This project adds density, mixed uses of retail, commercial, office space. In fact, it's even greater density than what was originally thought, and that's incredible when you think about, you set expectations, and we're actually seeing those expectations exceeded in an opportunity. That's remarkable for a city to be able to say that as they planned years ago, two or three years ago, and we're actually seeing even greater opportunities today. So I think that speaks to the type of city that we are. The other aspect about this is that the proposed Class A office space that is a part of this project, what you're considering today, helps us tremendously. One of the things to note is when the partnership was created in 2015 to work with you on prospect activity, at that time, we had about 45 projects in the pipeline. Today is over 125 projects in the pipeline. We need this type of product to be competitive with other markets in the Midwest, but also across North America. One of the things we're seeing right now is that cities along East, West Coast are looking at the Midwest differently, but the Midwest also includes Des Moines, Omaha, KC, OKC, Tulsa, Dallas. We want to be competitive, so by having office compatibility as far as market, this puts us into actually fighting above our weight class in some moments, and so again, extremely important. The hotel in itself will be a destination, not only for our local community, but also visitors, so again, a huge anchor as we look at our downtown development. The design of the project, if you look at the design that's being proposed, it hits what we've been talking about for around the ballpark. Several years ago, back in 1819, there was a master plan development done around the ballpark in the Delano area. This helps hit those design of what we want to see with those projects coming forward. It also reinforces it. The other aspect of this is that we are deliberate as we work on the development of downtown, but also as our community as a whole, that each project builds to the next project. We saw this with, with Block 1. I was just in a conversation last night, where it started with the Ambassador, it then led to public investment with the Garage, that led to the Kansas Leadership Center, which I think we'd all would say huge improvement to our downtown, and in fact, has opened up the opportunity to have the Culinary Arts Institute being built out today in the Henry's Building. So it works in making this strategic investment. The other part of this is that this improvement is building upon investments we've made not long ago. If you think about, it's been talked about River Vista with boats and bikes, just right up the river, this will complement that. Exploration Place, we know Adam Smith, a lot of grand vision around Exploration Place, this complements that, and then also, really kind of starting out was the Keeper of the Plains, where you really have the convergence of the rivers coming together and that great amenity that's very distinctive to Wichita. What you're being considered today builds on all that, and I think, and I know, it will build to the next projects as well. The other part of this is, is that I really do think it's important that it did go through this downtown public investment policy process, where again, looking at design, looking at the instruments are being asked for, are they of merit, and it was considered yes, and then also, how does it fit into the big picture of what we want to do? It passed all that, and I think that's incredible to be able to say as a community, we tested this project, and it passed. So again, I think it helps us do several things. One, is you look at cities across the nation, and we've looked at several, Cincinnati, Ohio, Louisville, Kentucky, Chattanooga, Tennessee. These are river cities that embrace its riverfront, and it's giving rewards to them now because they're distinctive, and you're seeing a lot of growth in these markets. It will help us to be able to do that. Again, it's important to invest in ourselves to retain talent and to be able to attract talent. This project helps us continue to do that. The other part of this is, is that the last couple of weeks, you know, if we started getting back into more meetings, right in person, I've had the opportunity personally to speak to those coming up into workforce now, both they're already in leadership, they're already working for companies, but then also even last night with the graduate class. There is an excitement with talent about what's going on in the city, where they see it going, but it's important that we continue to lean into it because both conversations was around, how is it we're working as a city to retain and grow talent? This project demonstrates our commitment to do that. So again, we appreciate the opportunity to come before you this morning to speak in favor of this project. Both the Graywood Shaw Partnership and downtown Wichita see it very critical as we continue to move forward. So again, we appreciate this solid step forward that you're considering today, and certainly available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker. And just for the council, after this item, we will be taking a short break.
Good morning. Sean Weaver, and for the last 25 years, I have worked or lived in the city of Wichita, and my story is similar to probably a lot of other stories that you've heard before, and that is, this is the best place that I've ever lived. We have a great city. We need to continue to make investments, and this is exactly what we're talking about today. Not only am I involved with the Downtown Development Corporation, but I'm also a resident in Delano at the 225 Sycamore property, which if you haven't been to, is a fantastic property. Investments in our city, investments in downtown over the last 10 years, if you look at the private investment versus the public side of that, has been astronomical. The investment that we're seeing in our city is primarily coming from the private sector, but we still need support of the public sector to make those things work. Quality of place is important. Having people move to our city is important. Two weeks ago, there was a baseball game in Delano, correct? The number of people that were in the Delano area was tremendous. I loved it. Those people are buying things. They're going to restaurants, they're going to the shops, they're creating sales tax. Sales tax is what's used to fund our government. It's what's used to make investment. Quality of place brings people to our city, not only visitors, but people that want to move and live in our city. What do those people do? They buy houses, they rent apartments, they pay property taxes. Those things are used for investments in our city. So I commend this project. I hope that you will support it. I believe it's important, and I thank you for your time.
Next speaker, please. Seeing none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench to further discussion on this item. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. So this has taken us a long time to get here, just not today, but over the last few years. When this stadium idea first came to be, this was always the end goal, building revenue-producing density around a world-class facility to attract investment and talent. Obviously, COVID derailed that, and frustration, obviously, but we're here today. I think my key takeaway is that this amendment with the expanded project scope allows the stadium district to accelerate and generate so we could potentially celebrate retiring bonds earlier. So here that we're going to be able to create an additional $5 million off of what we heard back in December, well, that's a turbo tub of money, so to speak, right? I'm looking at you, Jordan. So thank you for this increased investment and belief in Wichita.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that my vote today is to make sure that we help cover our debt. That's the important thing to me. Again, I keep thinking about, if we keep falling short in attendance and paying back the Star Bond, we will be paying out of, out of our general fund. So in order to do that, to make sure that we have money for this quality of life things further down the road, I do feel like we should accelerate this, and that way we can make sure and cover the Star Bond. So just explaining my vote on this a little bit. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to EPC, and then also to the Wichita Riverfront LP for being willing to invest in our community. As, as Jeff Flure mentioned, as we're trying to attract and retain talent and make Wichita more sticky, especially for our young talent, these are the kind of opportunities that they want and they want to see. So I always am appreciative when, when entities want to invest in making Wichita better. Our mission is to be an exceptionally well-run city, and growing our economy is one of those factors, and this is an opportunity for us to be able to do that. I also did want to recognize Mr. Perusio and Mr. Hancock, when you mentioned that there could be more community engagement. We can always have more community engagement, so thank you for coming today and just giving us a friendly reminder of that. It was noted, and I, I will be, I think we'll all be working with staff to make sure that we take that into account. So thank you for your time and for, and for reminding of us of that. As Councilmember Frye mentioned, the development around the world-class stadium is what's exciting. It was really the reason that I made the baseball vote, was because I wanted to see the West Bank explode, and to just grow, and to be more attractive for people to come down and enjoy the river. So I will be supportive of this today, and thank you for all of staff for your effort for being it, to bringing it to us today.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Ditto to everything my colleagues said. I'm also going to be supportive, and I appreciate all of the work that you all are doing on this project and accelerating that work to hopefully the supply chain holds up, and we can really do that. But I also want to make sure that those neighborhood priorities are taken care of with the TIF, and that we, we do have neighborhood representation on those committees, and no blame on that. I just want to see that going forward. But again, I'm appreciative of that. I think this is going to be exciting and looking forward to that development.
Are there comments from the council? If not, Chair recognizes Councilmember Blubah as this falls into District 4.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and, and thank you, everybody, for coming in here today. Jordan, appreciate you being here, and appreciate you answering the questions, and I do appreciate the foundation you're laying, and, and, you know, you've been around Wichita long enough to know now, you know, what Wichita's won, and I think you're trying to deliver that, and I appreciate that. Also appreciate EPC coming in here and doing another project. Very happy with the Sycamore project, and excited to, to see this one come into fruition. So I'd like to take the staff's recommended action to close the public hearing, approve the development agreement with Wichita Riverfront LP and EPC Real Estate Group LLC, adopt the amended project plan, adopt the ordinances, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Click or open a roll. Members cast a vote. I have received 7 yeas votes. That motion does pass. We are on item 2 of 12, I think, and it's already been like three hours, so we're going to go in recess for 15 minutes, come back at 12, we can take on the rest of the agenda. So again, just a 15-minute recess. Thank you. Good morning, and welcome. Thanks for spending the day with us.
I was going to say good morning, but perhaps good afternoon, Mayor Whipple, council members. I'm Lindsay Benak. I'm the relatively new Director of Arts and Cultural Services, and I'm here to present on the Tourism Business Improvement District, also known as T-Bid, the Scope of Services and Budget for 2023. A little bit of background on T-Bid. In 2014, City Council adopted an ordinance creating the T-Bid District. The district's boundaries are the legal limits of the city itself. Upon approval of the ordinance, the City Council entered into a contract with Visit Wichita to market Wichita to leisure and group visitors, drive hotel demand, and enhance Wichita's image as a destination. In accordance with K-Bid, the Kansas Business Improvement District statute, the proposed 2023 Scope of Services and Budget is presented annually to you all for approval. The Scope of Services itself outlines the strategies and budget, allocations for leisure marketing and group sales activities to drive visitation to Wichita. Specifically, the Scope of Services and Budget outlines how funds received from the 2.75% nightly hotel assessment will be used to promote tourism in Wichita during the next fiscal year. And with that, I'll turn it over to Susie Santo, President and CEO of Visit Wichita.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Councilmember Tuttle, council members, it's a pleasure to be here today. I'm going to share a little bit about the five-year history of the T-Bid. And as you can see, pre-pandemic, the revenue collections were getting near that, you know, just over $3 million in 2020. Obviously, with the pandemic, what happened to revenue? You see the economic impact. Obviously, in 2020, just to remind you, we did not do the Strategic Marketing Insights research to determine because we ceased advertising. And then you can look at 2021. While we have begun to dig out of 2020, we are still behind our 2019 levels in 2021 with the economic impact and our leisure ROI as well. I will point out that leisure ROI number at the very bottom on 2021, that 4259, actually, there's a mistake on that, and it should read 2442. So it's 2442, and that will match what you have. So talking about, you can see a significant dip on what's happened. The reality is the pandemic hit this industry hard, and what these dollars do and what we're here today is to help our community. These dollars bring revenue back into Wichita and to help those that have been really hit by the pandemic. So the budget before you for 2023 is 3.1. Again, where that revenue, that estimate has come from is it's based on the most recent STAR and TOURS economic, and that is a countrywide. And the good news is our estimate for 2023 puts us back on par with 2019. So we anticipate that growth continuing this year, and next year we'll be back on par. The bulk of the dollars are spent for leisure marketing. And just to remind the council, our leisure marketing efforts, we want people that are in Western Kansas or in Kansas City, Oklahoma, we want people to come to Wichita and spend their time and their dollars for a getaway to Wichita. And that's how we go out and we market. Now, we'll tell you, when we look at travel sentiment across the country, there's some good news. Right now, 58% of American travelers feel closer to normal in the U.S. than they have throughout the whole pandemic, and that is an all-time high, and that's great news. The second piece is 61.3% of U.S. travelers, even given the inflation in the price of gas, say travel is a high-budget priority. So that bodes well. And finally, which I'm looking at every month or every week since the pandemic started, 87% of us, U.S. travelers, have current trip plans right now. And again, we're positioned well to capitalize on that drive market. We know there's pent-up demand. So these advertising dollars will help drive visitors, and we want people to choose Wichita because, again, those visitors help our community by bringing dollars back in and purest form of economic development. The second amount we spend dollars are on our group marketing efforts and think of meetings, conventions, and sporting events. We want Wichita to be top of mind and selected to bring that meeting, that convention, that sporting event. Perhaps many of you got out to see the NCAA Women just a couple of weeks ago. Again, just a great example of a way we can showcase our community on a national scale. We can bring visitors, and then it's a great quality-of-life for residents. And then finally, the proposed general expenses, that includes personnel, it includes research. And research is a really important piece of it because at the end of every year, we go back and we do an advertising effectiveness study because we want to make sure every dollar we spend, there's an ROI. And then finally, as within every year, if the dollars coming in from those visitors that stay in our hotel dip below that 3.1 estimate, we adjust. We adjust and we spend accordingly. The second piece, there are carryover funds from the prior year. The T-Bid Council reviewed and approved the use of those carryover funds into this year. Divided at about half of those dollars will be spent on, again, on our summer and leisure advertising campaign to make sure that we are top of mind and people choose Wichita. The next about a quarter is on personnel, and then finally, the last quarter goes to our strategic event fund. And as I've talked about that fund over the last several years, that's the fund that allows us to have those dollars when we win the opportunity to host those events. So with that, I would just like to say it's a pleasure to get to do what we do at Visit Wichita, to promote this incredible city, all the incredible attractions that we have, to bring visitors here, to ultimately help the community, and it's never been more important, I think, than now because all of those businesses that have suffered over the last few years, these dollars are critical to bring them back. We know travelers are wanting to travel. We want the message out there so that they choose Wichita to spend their time and their dollars. With that, I will stand for questions, or I'll turn it back over to, excuse me, Mayor.
Questions first for staff or for Susie? Seeing none.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for the public on this item, seeing none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item. If there's no further discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the Tourism Business Improvement District 2023 Scope of Services and Budget. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in the second by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk open the roll. Members cast the vote. I have received seven yeas votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance amendments to Section 3.49.020 regarding licensing of emergency wrecker services.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Captain Ronald Hunt with the Wichita Police Department here just to basically give another quick, brief overview and ask for a, basically, a 30-day extension off of our last extension. But since 1978, we've had a contract with the wrecker services for the city of Wichita, and since 2010, the city has had the contract and wrecker companies to tow those impounds. And again, I'll just kind of briefly just scan over this since it's much the same that you saw in February. We've been in discussions with them. We had asked for the emergency wrecker service that would expire on May 1st, and since we are coming up on that, we're asking just for that extra 30-day extension to June 1st to allow all parties to basically finalize. I think late last week, on Thursday, Friday, we kind of finally came to an agreement, and it's been finalized. But we just don't have all the signatures and everything yet, and we couldn't get ready for today's presentation. So basically, the recommendation is just please extend. place the amendments on the first reading and authorize all necessary signatures for this. And I will stand for any questions that you may have in regards to it.
Questions for staff? See none. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. Discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item. If there's no further discussion, I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to place the ordinance on first reading and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk of Open and Roll, members cast the vote. I've received 78 votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Wichita Employees Retirement and Police and Fire Retirement Systems Actuarial Valuation Reports as of December 31, 2021.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Pam Beam, and I'm the Pension Manager with the Department of Finance. Before you this afternoon, we will present the results of the 2021 Actuarial Valuation of the Wichita Retirement System. These valuations are performed annually to provide the update on the financial stability of each retirement system and to determine the required employer contribution rate. I would like to introduce our actuary, Jake Lebowskius, who is with the firm of Chiron, and will be presenting the results of the actuarial evaluation as of December 31, 2021.
Welcome.
Thanks, Pam. Good morning, Mayor, City Councilmembers. I am Jake Lebowskius with Chiron, and we are the actuary for the city's retirement systems. The city operates two retirement systems, the Wichita Employees Retirement System and the Police and Fire Retirement System. Every year, the actuary performs an annual valuation, and we recommend the contribution rate for the city's contribution to these retirement systems. These city pension funds are in very good health. They're both well over 90% funded, and that's due to a well-managed portfolio and appropriate assumptions and the prudent and appropriate contributions that the city makes each year consistently. So what's the purpose of the annual actuarial evaluation? Well, it calculates the assets and liabilities and the funded ratio, which is the ratio of the assets to the liabilities. It also determines the city's contribution rate for the following year. So this valuation determines the contribution rate for 2023. Part of the valuation, we review the demographics of the systems, the number of retirements, disabilities, deaths, and we also review the investment performance of the retirement systems. The valuation also allows us to do a projection of where we expect the funded ratios and contribution levels to be in the future. It's important not to only know where we're at today, but what's expected going forward. Where's the trajectory of the plans to make sure that they're in a healthy financial situation? And we also identify and assess the primary risks of the systems. This graphic shows a general representation of the pension fund or any pension fund. It's from 1965, and it's still applicable today. It represents a tank of water. The water is the asset of the pension fund. The assets are used to pay retirement benefits to retired city workers as well as any administrative expenses. And the pension fund is contributed to by city contributions as well as employee contributions and any investment earnings on those assets. Those assets are invested to earn investment earnings. And the size of the tank is recalculated every year. We think of the size of the tank as the liabilities, and we want that tank to, you know, be as close to full as possible. And so the difference between the top of the tank and the asset level is that unfunded liability. And depending on each year's valuation and the calculation of the liabilities, the employer contribution rate is increased or decreased to make sure that the pension systems are on a sustainable path towards fully funded. So to get to this year's results, the funded ratio for the employee plan increased from 93% to 94%, and the police and fire plan remained level at 94%. That unfunded liability decreased by $4 million for the employee plan, and it increased by $1 million for the police and fire plan. The evaluation results this year had one change in assumptions from the prior year, and that change was lowering the investment return assumption from 7.5% to 7.25%, and that's reflected in all of these results. This page shows the calculation of the city's contribution rate. These are shown as percent of payroll or percent of salary for individuals. We start at the top, the total normal cost rate, that's the cost of benefits accruing for current active city workers. And then we subtract off the member contribution rate. Employees' plan contribute 4.7%, and the police and fire plan contribute 7%. That leaves the city normal cost, the city's portion of the cost of benefits accruing this year. And we add to it a contribution that goes towards that unfunded liability to result in the total city contribution rate. So for the employee plan, the contribution rate is 13%, and for police and fire, it's 21.9%. Here we show a reconciliation of the contribution rates from last year's valuation to this year's valuation. Last year, at the very top, the employee plan was 12.9%, and police and fire was 20.9%. The asset gain due to positive investment experience reduced the contribution rates by about 2%. There was a slight liability loss on police and fire of half a percent. The assumption changed, lowering the assumed rate of return from 7.5% to 7.25%, increased the contribution rate for the employee plan by 2.2% and police and fire by 3.4%. And there were some other changes as well, but the total rates, as shown on the prior slide, is 13% for the employee plan, a 1/10th percent increase from last year, and 21.9%, which is a 1% increase from last year for police and fire. This table shows a 10-year history of the city's contribution rates to both the police and fire and employee plan. Police and fire is in gold, and the employee plan is in blue. You can see the contribution rates have been relatively stable over the last 10 years, fluctuating mostly just due to investment performance. Here we show the 10-year history of the funded ratios. Again, police and fire in gold and the employee plan in blue. And you can see they move very much in tandem with each other because they're invested in the same asset allocation. And, you know, it's been remarkably stable over the last 10 years. This funded ratio has fluctuated between 91% and 95%, so that's extremely stable for a 10-year period, and these plans are well-funded. This next graphic compares how these two plans compare to public plans around the country. Each bar is a distribution of funded ratios for about 130 of the largest public sector retirement systems around the country. And there are technically two dots, although they tend to overlap because the two systems are very similarly funded. But both of the systems are in the top tier of plans and are among the most well-funded plans across the country. Finally, this valuation is based on one set of assumptions about what's going to happen in the future, including assuming that investment earnings are going to be 7.25% each year in the future. We know that it's not going to be exactly 7.25%. We know experience is going to be different. It might be significantly different, so there are risks inherent in these plans. And the full valuation report goes into all of the risks that we've identified as key risks, but just a couple, just to highlight them, are the investment risk, the risk that investments will earn less than assumed over the long term, as well as the longevity and other demographic risk. The risk that members will live longer than we're currently assuming or that participant behavior will change such that the cost of plans goes up. With that, that concludes our remarks, or my remarks. Mark is here. The recommendation is to receive and file the reports and approve the 2023 employer contribution rates. I'm here for questions if there are any.
No questions for staff? See none. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item. If there is no further discussion, I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the Wichita Employees Retirement and Police and Fire Retirement Systems Actuarial Valuation Reports as of December 31, 2021, and approve the 2023 Employer Retirement Fund Contribution Rates. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk of Open and Roll, members cast the vote. I've received 78 votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Funding for Kellogg and Eisenhower Airport Parkway aesthetic improvements.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Gary Danson, Public Works Engineering. The item before you this afternoon is proposed funding for aesthetic improvements of the Kellogg and Eisenhower Airport Parkway interchange. In February of this year, the City Council approved the sale of a remnant property at the southeast corner of the interchange of Kellogg and Eisenhower Parkway, and allocated the money from the sale to be used for aesthetic improvements to the interchange, which really started us down the path to looking at a project for the overall interchange. Just to give you a high-level view kind of of what we're looking at here in the area that we're discussing for our scope. So you kind of see the square part in the middle, the freeway running east-west, Kellogg Freeway and the ramps are the responsibility of KDOT as far as ownership and maintenance. We are working with KDOT. I've had some discussions with them, and I'll come back to that. Primarily, we're focusing on that square area, kind of the, what you see up top is, you're familiar with Kellogg and Ridge, Eisenhower Parkway, where the traffic signals are, is that area that's the most visual to folks that are going through the interchange, as well as that flyover ramp, which is a KDOT bridge, but we've started discussions with them, and it looks like they may be interested in participating even with funding. The inbound and outbound roads, Eisenhower Parkway, out of the airport and into the parkway, and some of the, what we'd call the median areas there would be our focus also. You know, as this is the first thing that people see when they come into our airport and come into Wichita, I think we have a real opportunity here to make a much bigger impact by providing some aesthetic improvements and enhancements. And so I want to talk about some details here. We haven't started the design just yet, but with our request for funding today, that's what we would be moving forward with. So some of our initial thoughts. And I talked about some of the, what we would call the elevated areas of the interchange here. Very simply, if you look at the steel hand railing around the interchange itself, it's all outdated. It's corroded. It needs to be replaced. It's caused some rust staining onto the barriers of the bridges, which we hear from the public quite a bit, especially on the flyover bridge, something that's pretty easy to fix, to replace that railing to something that's more aesthetically pleasing. The concrete barrier that you see there, as well as the bridge barrier that's underneath that steel railing, we've had really good luck with concrete masonry coating that you see on our newer bridges, as well as our freeway improvements. It's a fairly simple, fairly inexpensive way to really provide a better look for this. So if you see right at the bottom of the screen, you'll see some issues with the concrete pavement right there, too. Our, in working with our maintenance guys, looking at our outsourced pavement preservation program, and we've talked to all council members about this at different times. Concrete pavement is prioritized worst-first across the city. We've got quite a bit of concrete pavement, and it takes some time to get to it. So our maintenance staff is going to evaluate this and see if it might be a candidate for localized pavement repairs within our OP3 program. If not, I do think that we will look at repairing some of the worst areas with this project, depending on funding availability. Not all of it looks like this, so I think we can make a big difference in just picking off the worst spots as we go. This is on the west side of the interchange. The cars you see on the left are inbound towards the airport property. So you can see this large median area that's not very appealing, even as far as from a perspective of grass, which is missing in a lot of areas. This provides an opportunity for landscaping, brick pavers, whatever it might be, even if we get to a point of public art, which I'll come back to in just a moment. But this would be a real easy fix. This is a present on both sides of the interchange on the south side, and we think we can make some improvements there really easy. I mentioned the flyover bridge. Again, this is the responsibility of KDOT. We started the conversation with them. We met with them, Wichita Airport Authority staff, within the last few weeks to start talking about some options for this project. They seem to be willing to want to partner and look into the possibility of providing funding for the project. Haven't heard back on that yet, but I know they'll certainly work with us, even outside funding, to allow us to make some changes here. You'll see over to the right side of this screen is street lighting. There's street lighting throughout the interchange. That is the city's responsibility. We, they're Evergy lights. As part of our annual street lighting budget, we pay a tariff fee for those lights. We're looking at the possibility of upgrading those to black fiberglass lights. It's one way to help supplement the budget. Also, it provides a really nice look. We've done this on some of our arterial corridors, and so we're looking into that now. You see, and so there's lighting on the bridge also that we would do. Right in the middle of that picture, you see a little bit of a stub of something that's sticking up on that bridge. That's where a street light used to be and had not been replaced. So hopefully, we'll get that street light replaced with that, too. You can see along the concrete barrier alongside of this bridge, what I talked about with the rust staining from the handrail. We probably hear about this bridge more than anything from the public and how they don't like the way it looks, especially when you're on Kellogg down below. Again, that's something we can fix with new railing. We also could provide some coating along that, as well as maybe the piers that's holding the bridge up there that really would add a nice look to all of this. And you can see here that the concrete pavement is really in not bad shape. One of the things we'd want to look at doing on this flyover bridge in particular, and maybe the others, is to add LED lighting, somewhat similar like we've done at Kellogg and West Street, as well as with the bridges out on East Kellogg. We have probably heard, in fact, I'm confident in my career with the city, more compliments about that LED lighting than anything we've probably ever done aesthetically. So it provides a really nice look at something that our staff has taken over as far as maintenance and programming. I think it's definitely something we want to look at here. So just to kind of summarize that again real quick, the proposed project's scope would include enhancing existing railings around the interchange, removing rust stains, and/or providing masonry coatings for piers and the bridge concrete barriers. I mentioned LED lighting, possible upgrade of streetlights, landscaping and pavers, and repairing the concrete pavement where that is feasible and makes sense. The initial design will include a scope of work that utilizes the funding from the property sale only at this time, as we have no other funding identified, but I'll come back to that in just a second, too. One thing I want to add, as we are working on the proposed capital improvement program right now for 2023 to 2032, at some point in time, when that draft CIP is ready, we will be presenting that to the design council for them to look at projects and their consideration of projects that should be deemed for special consideration for aesthetic enhancements. I feel pretty confident that a project like this would be deemed special consideration. So as we move forward with the solicitation for design, the design team would definitely include an artist, and then we'll see how that process works out with the design council. But it seems to make a lot of sense here. That's probably what we need to do. Staff recommends initiating the budget of $566,745 from the sale of the property at the Kellogg and Eisenhower Parkway interchange to be utilized for design, project development, and a portion of construction. I know that's a very exact number. It's what's currently available from the sale, taking out administrative fees and everything that goes with that. As I mentioned, we're currently developing the proposed CIP. Staff does recommend that the proposed capital improvement program include additional funding for construction, looking at everything that goes into the CIP, looking at priorities, looking at available funding. That's why I'll tell you again, right now, we are only starting down the path of using the $566,000 that is available. We will be able to adapt and expand that as needed if more funding becomes available. I mentioned that we had talked to Wichita Airport staff. Right now, it doesn't look feasible that there's any funding available from them because the funding that comes to the airport has to be used onsite, which this is not considered. They are planning to make improvements south of here, further south on Eisenhower Parkway, and we do want to make sure we coordinate with them and make sure everything goes together here. So we're going to stay in close contact with them and make sure we collaborate on this design. I mentioned that KDOT was going to ask about funding, so I'm hopeful that we may have some opportunities there. And I would just mention again that I think we can supplement some of this budget with our annual streetlight budget. Historically, when we have worked with Evergy to upgrade existing poles, it's a fairly minimal cost. Beyond that, the tariff fee is unchanged annually for those lights, but I think we can make some pretty significant improvements there without a lot of additional cost. Depending on your approval today, we would plan to move forward with the design, working with the design council and the components that come with that. We would take this before, as this is generally on the border of districts four and five, we would plan to take this to both district advisory boards for their consideration and at some point in time, bring this back to council for additional construction funding, approval of the design concept, and approval of the aesthetic elements, if we get that far, and hopefully we do. With that, staff recommends City Council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public? See none. Thank you. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Gary, just two things. You answered both of my questions, but I would definitely, I'm enthusiastic about the LED lights. I think that would be awesome. And since you said there's an artist consultant, I just wanted to throw my two cents out. Not the best artist, but going into the airport, is there a way to just not have a basic rail with something that kind of implements some of the design of the airport or something that matches it or has something? that matches it, or has something to do with aircraft? I know when we did the first street bridge, we put some design work in the regular railing that was there, is there a way to do that, to just kind of make it stand out a little more?
We can certainly take that into consideration, I appreciate that. You know, you're right on the bridges there at the Brookside Drainage Stitch, we were able to take advantage of the paneling there, and it was pretty simple, but it made a pretty big impact aesthetically on making some changes there. This railing is not quite the same, as far as height, especially in the opportunities to make those types of improvements, but we'll look at it, sure. Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, Chair recognizes Councilmember Blueba, excuse me, as this item falls in District Four.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I'm, Gary, I appreciate you guys working on this, this is something that I've heard about time and time again since we built a new airport, especially, I think, the material that's used there, the corrosive and stuff on that guard rail, so appreciate you guys addressing all this. Appreciate Councilmember Fry for being creative about coming up with the funds for this, so it's something that is very important, I feel like it is the welcome-to-Wichita sign there, so we really need it to look good. I'd like to take staff's recommended action to approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize necessary signatures.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Tuttle, Clerk open the roll, members cast the vote. I've received seven yeas votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
2022 traffic signalization.
Signalization.
American City Council member Gary Jansen, again, Public Works Engineering. Second item I have is 2022 traffic signalization funding, and we have proposed locations for this funding. The adopted CIP includes annual funding to signalize major intersections and improve the traffic signals at existing signalized intersections. The 2022 program will be used for design and construction of traffic signals at the following locations, which I'll talk about in detail in just a moment. Ridge and Village Circle, which is this south of K-96 on Ridge Road, 29th Street North and Greenwich Road, which is at the entrance to Stryker, an adjacent to where Top Golf is now being built, and MacArthur Road and Hoover Road, which is, actually is an existing signal, but it was put in kind of on a temporary basis on wood poles and span wire, so it's time to try to get that replaced. I will tell you, there's a lot going on in the design and construction market right now, we've struggled to see a lot of bids on the construction side. When we solicited a design for the MacArthur and Hoover Road traffic signal, we got no submittals, so we're going to still work on that. Our goal is to design that project and use this funding to hopefully get it built in 2023, so we've got to go back and address that again. The Ridge and Village Circle signal is expected to be constructed this year, the plans are complete. There is a pretty significant lead time these days on traffic signal equipment, so it may be late this year before it's built. The other two signals are expected to be constructed in 2023, again with the caveat, MacArthur and Hoover, we've got to get somebody to design the improvements first. If there are remaining funds, they'll be used for additional sites as requested by the public or identified by staff when warrants are met, and I just wanted to highlight that again, real quick. Regardless of where traffic signals are installed across the city, there is a standard that we follow, an international standard, through the MUTCD, probably heard some of us, some of you've probably heard us use that term, manual and uniform traffic control devices, it's what all communities use to warrant, to establish warrants for traffic signals, we make sure those warrants are in place first, regardless of how the traffic signal is funded, before we consider installing the same. MacArthur and Hoover Road, this is the existing signal, again, it's on wood poles and span wires. We've done this in the past, when a traffic signal was warranted, and maybe we didn't have the funding at the time, for what you see is more of our normal traffic signal, steel poles and mast arms, it works. There's a lot of wires down there, and I know that looks a little bit crazy, but it works. There's a lot of, Sedgwick County's traffic signals have been like this for some time, we do not like to keep them like this in perpetuity, so there comes a time when it makes sense for us to replace those, and I think that is, time is now, as long as we can find someone, find a way to move forward. This is showing Ridge Road and Village Circle, there's a lot of development going on in this area, just even in the last few months, there's more things that have kicked up, so this picture doesn't probably do it really just, a lot of justice, but looking back west at the Quick Trip, and then back behind you on this picture to the east, there's a lot going on in that area with commercial development in particular, this traffic signal is warranted now, and again, it should be installed by late this year. I mentioned Greenwich Road and 29th Street North, the intersection is fully developed, to your left is Stryker, to the bottom right is where Top Golf is being, is being built now. This intersection does warrant a traffic signal now, and I was a little surprised to see that, but I think it's because there's so much happening at Stryker right now, that that traffic alone, I mean, there's other things going on here, there's a school to the north, there's some development happening to the east, but it does warrant a traffic signal now, so it'll be good timing to have this built next year. And just to show a little broader view of this same intersection, you can see the Stryker fields to the bottom left, and again, I didn't have an updated aerial, but Top Golf being constructed to the bottom right. The adopted CIP includes $750,000 in 2022 for traffic signalization. Staff requests the full budget be initiated at this time. Staff recommends city council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none, input from the public? See none, further discussion? If there's no further discussion, I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the budget, adopt the resolution, authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Second has been made by Vice Mayor Tuttle, Clerk open the roll, members cast the I've received six votes. Sorry. I've received seven votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Loan agreement for the Northwest Water Facility project.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Penny Weiss, Fluke Works and Utilities, here this morning to discuss financing for our Northwest Water Treatment Facility project. Karen, can you help me?
It's my favorite PowerPoint yet. Just one slide.
Say yes. Thank you. Adam sabotaged me last time, too. Okay, so as you know, we're constructing Northwest Water Facility in northwest part of Wichita, and we're here today to discuss the financing of that project. Forty-nine percent of that project is financed by WIPIA, which is a loan program administered by the EPA, that stands for Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act. Forty-eight percent of the project is financed through a loan program administered by KDHD, that's the State Revolving Loan Fund, and the remainder is financed by water utility cash and revenue bonds. The WIPIA credit agreement was approved in April of 2020, that's completely executed and done with. Today, we're here to talk about the SRF financing portion. It has been always designed to be a series of five loans, the first of which was approved in November of 2020, and the second of which we're here to talk about today. Each SRF loan has a specific interest rate, but all of the other terms are the same across all loans. So that forty-eight percent financed by SRF is a total of $267,342,000 maximum principal, which includes capitalized interest. Interest rates are calculated as a percentage of the average bond buyer index, and is a twenty-year repayment term on all loans in this series. Each loan has an estimated cost of 0.25% for loan insurance, which is of the total debt service cost. Here we compare the first loan that was approved in November of 2020 with the loan that we're looking for, seeking approval for today. That loan is for $60 million, a little bit more than the last series, the interest rate is 1.34%, a little bit better than the last time, and all loans in this series will have a repayment due date of August 1st, 2025, or one year after project completion. Estimated service fees are $3.7 million for this loan, the insurance cost is $162,339. And when we compare the SRF loan to traditional revenue bonds, we estimate that we'll save about $12 million in financing costs. All of this is programmed in our utilities pro forma, so these annual debts payments have already been accounted for, and there are no changes to the projected future rate increase. And so staff's recommendation is to approve the loan agreement, authorize the required insurance payment to be paid out of the water utility fund operating budget, and authorize necessary signatures.
Questions for staff? See none. Input from the public on this item? See none. Bring discussion back to the bench, further discussion on this item. If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the SRF loan agreement, authorize the budget, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle, Clerk open the roll, members cast the vote. I've received seven yeas votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Zone 2022-11, city zone change from TF3 to family residential to be multifamily residential for construction of two duplexes on property generally located on the west side of North Grove Avenue and one half-mile north of East 13th Street, 1701 North Grove.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Scott Wadele from the Planning Department. This item is being presented today because the DAB and Planning Commission recommendations are different. The applicant is applying for rezoning from TF3 to family zoning to be multifamily residential in order to allow for construction of a second duplex on the site. The property is located at 1701 North Grove Avenue, the property is currently zoned TF3, and has one duplex under construction or recently completed on the north half of the property. The south portion is undeveloped. So the applicant is requesting the rezoning in order to reduce the setbacks on the property, which will allow them to construct a second duplex on the site. The site is surrounded by properties that are zoned TF3 and developed with single-family homes, or vacant. In terms of the larger context and pattern of development, the area generally consists of single-story, single-family homes and two-family homes, with garages located in line or behind the primary structure. In terms of reviews, on March 7th, the district advisory board reviewed the application and recommended approval, subject to Protective Overlay 392, and with design requirements, not recommendations. The design requirements are described in your agenda package as part of the MAPC minutes, no member of the public spoke at this event. On March 17th, the public hearing for this case was held at the Planning Commission meeting. Planning Commission recommended approval of the application, 8 to 2, subject to Protective Overlay 392, described in the staff report. As part of their recommendation, they recommended that duplex design guidelines be included, but not required, so as a recommendation. No member of the public spoke at this event. For council action, oh, went back to protest real quick, no protest petitions were received for the requested zone change. In terms of council action, it's recommended that the city council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and approve the rezoning with a protective overlay, with design recommendations, not requirements, this would require four of seven votes. You also have the following alternatives, you can override the Planning Commission, adopt findings of the DAB, and approve the rezoning with a protective overlay, with design requirements, not recommendations. You can override the Planning Commission, make alternative findings, deny the rezoning, which is five of seven votes, or you can return the case to the Planning Commission, which requires a simple majority of four of seven votes. With that, I'll take you through some of the images, and then I'll stand for questions. So here's an aerial showing the site, and you can see that the site is roughly the size of two parcels nearby. Here's the zoning, you can see it's largely surrounded by TF3. Be multifamily zoning is found further to the west, that's that brown color. Here's the map from the comprehensive plan showing recommended for residential. Here's an illustration that was provided by the applicant, and it shows one of the duplexes, you can see that the garages are predominantly out in front of the structure. This is a map of the protest area, again, no protests were received for this case. Here's a photo from the site, you can see the duplex that's under construction. Property to the north of the site, property to the east, property south, and back to the aerial. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none. We'll shift it over to Councilmember Johnson, as this item resides in District One.
Thanks, Mayor. I would move that the city council override the Planning Commission, approve the request for be multifamily residential zoning and Protective Overlay Number 392, with the duplex design guidelines as a requirement for the southern portion of the property where the new duplex is being constructed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle, Clerk open the roll, members cast I've received seven yeas votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Approval of travel for Councilmember Brandon Johnson and Councilmember Brian Fry to attend the Leadership Kansas Orientation, April 20th through 23rd, 2022, in Lawrence, Kansas.
All right, I think we had lots of discussion on this on Friday, is there any further discussion? Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, sir, I just want to remind the public that I am not seeking reimbursement for travel costs on this item.
Any further discussion? If not, make the motion to approve the travel. I've received seven yeas votes, that motion passes. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Let's start off with appointments. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Due to that notification we got from Sasha, I would like to reappoint Valerie White to the Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Board.
Further appointments, Councilmember Blueba.
I'd like to appoint Lucia Sherman to the Parks Rec Board.
Councilmember Fry.
I'd like to reappoint Angela Brer to the Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Board.
Further appointments from the council? I will be reappointing to the design council Tyler Cooper, Steve Voe, Matt Ham, Greg Allison, Jesse Sterling, Armando Manjares, Elliot Bacchus, Jeff Best, Bill Meyer, Susan Motor, and I will also be reappointing to the MAPC and FOX. Any further appointments? If not, I make a motion to accept the appointments, as stated, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle, Clerk open the roll, members cast the vote. I've received seven yeas votes, that motion passes, those appointments are hereby made. Further discussion or comments from the council? If there is no further discussion, then we will be recessing, or making a motion to recess into executive session. So I move that the city council recess into executive session for thirty minutes to review personal performance pursuant to KSA 754319B1, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. The executive session is required to protect the privacy interests of an identifiable I have two green blue sheets, should I make them both in one motion? Then, directly following the first executive session, I move that the city council recess and do a additional executive session for fifteen minutes to receive information on a contractual matter pursuant to KSA 754319B2 for potential litigation, legal action. The executive session is required to protect the attorney-client privilege and the public interest. So the executive session will begin at 12:50, and it will end at forty-five minutes. What was that? 1:35. Thank you to Councilmember District Three for being quicker with math than I am. And we will meet back in the chamber at 1:35 to either extend or to close out the meeting. Thank you. Oh, seconded by...
Second.
Vice Mayor Tuttle. Sorry, I, yeah, we're voting. I've received seven yeas votes, we are going into executive session.